Good evening Garner. Welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting of March 19th. I'm always glad to see a lot of citizens in here, always glad to have input, glad to see people committed to their community. And what I like even better than that is seeing Boy Scouts. They're here to help us this evening, and we'll get to that in just a moment. But I think I should start off with our first order of business, which is to call the roll.
Mayor Gupta.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance. Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton. And Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Thank you. And we, like I say, we have some special guest Pledge of Allegiance leaders and invocation leaders. Mr. Vance, if you could introduce our guests.
... America, the Ochini, Ochini Council. We have Mr. Kiefer Fromm. He's with Troop 326-326, and he's Patrol Leader with that particular troop. In the Pledge of Allegiance and before the invocation, we have Reverend Carlton McDaniel, and he will give us our invocation after the Pledge of Allegiance. If anyone would please stand.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its objective justice for all.
Thank you.
I'd like to say before Reverend McDaniel starts, he is the executive director or able to serve.
Thank you. It is a privilege to bring all of our hearts and minds to God to start this meeting so that all that we do and we say and the decisions we make honor God as our leader and our defender. Let us pray. I'd like to start with this beautiful prayer that I've adopted, is mine, with St. Francis of Assisi, and then I'll close. It's just such a gorgeous prayer. Would you pray with me? Lord, let thy peace fill up until I overflow; that where people cannot speak, I may be their advocate; that where anyone is rejected, I may extend my arms in welcome; that where parents are heavy burdened, I may offer a word of comfort; that where our children struggle, I may lift them up and cheer; that where some see disability, I may reveal to them extraordinary gifts; that where others judge, I may share with them my deep gladness; and that where any are overlooked, I may help the lights of all to shine. O giver of these gifts, grant that I may not so much seek, to be reassured as to reassure, to be praised as to praise, to be accepted as to accept. For it is in all our uncertainty that we are inspired to hope; it is in the great challenges that we discover our greatest joys; and it is in our community of wanderers that we find our way home. Dear God, we ask your blessings on this meeting tonight. Well, we thank you for the wisdom that you give this council, the decision-making they do to bring us together, to create a community of one, so that we can serve you and those that need help, we help them. We celebrate those who have victories. God, thank you for their wisdom, and we ask you to continue to guide them. Lord, thank you for this incredible community, one that believes that all people of all abilities are welcome, and not only can they be served, but they serve, and we acknowledge them as meaningful parts of our community. And God, we thank you most for knowing us as individuals, for sending your Son to die on the cross, even though you know us so well and the sin that we have. God got our paths so that we can be compassionate, that we can have the love that you have, and serve people and love them as you do. And I have most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Reverend McDaniel, can you please tell us a little, give us one minute, tell us a little bit about SERV before you go?
SERV started serving this community 21 years ago, adults with disabilities from age 19 through 60. It's a continuing education. We use exactly the same curriculum that the school system uses. We do a lot of community service, a lot of learning how to use microwave and small appliances and things, so that when they live semi-independently or independently, they're able to not only take care of themselves, but also know that God created them to serve others. We are so excited about this community and so excited that the growth that we're having, we're faith-based, we don't accept any government funding, it's all about this community, the faith community, the regular people. And we're excited about the future of moving from a program that houses a day program for 60 people to go to a program between 100 and 120 people in the next three years. It's exciting to think about all that we can do with the partnerships we already have and the God that we serve and this community, realizing what a valuable asset they really are.
Thank you. Thank you Carlton. We appreciate the inspiring words, and we appreciate the work that you and your team do day after day after day to help our citizens and our community. Thank you again. With that, we'll get into some business. The first item on the agenda is petitions and comments, and I like to read this because it's important, even though it's detailed. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items that are not included in this agenda regarding matters germane to town policies or business or subjects within the town council's real or apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or group spokesmen must sign up with the town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but may not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And I'll ask the town clerk if anyone has signed up to speak, or maybe I'm asking the town attorney. I always get confused. We got one with the microphone over here.
I don't believe any person has signed up for petitions and comments.
Thank you. Thank you. They must have read the warning here. That it'd be not on the agenda and germane to town affairs. So, next item is to adopt the agenda tonight that's been handed out and looked over by staff. So I'll ask council members, is there a motion?
So moved. Suck it.
Moved by Mr. Vance and seconded by Mr. Matthews to adopt the agenda. I'll ask the councilmen, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed by nay. Hearing none, that's unanimous. Thank you for adopting the agenda. Let's see, and are there any presentations on the agenda tonight? No. Well, it's hard to top the Boy Scouts and Carlton McDaniel anyway, hard to do better than that. So now, we'll get to the consent agenda, and the staff and the council have looked over these items previously, given thorough review. It's not too lengthy this time. I'll ask the councilman, is there any wish to remove item from the consent agenda? Here. Hearing none right there. I'll ask councils for a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Matthews, seconded by Mr. Singleton. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay. None, hearing none is unanimous. We have adopted the consent agenda. Thank you for seeing us a lot of work. The rest of the agenda tonight falls into two different categories. The first half is public hearings, where different presenters and interested parties have an opportunity to make a presentation to the council, and then later will be some new and old business. So we'll start the public hearing tonight, and I can also remind everyone that these related to annexations and rezonings are legislative hearings, which do not require sworn testimony. But persons interested in speaking, including the applicant, must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff will present a report on each one, followed by the applicant and persons are supporting or opposing the application. Council requests groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group. And we'll start with item number one, which is a voluntary contiguous annexation related to Vandora Springs Road, and the presenter will be our Planning Director, Mr. Jeff Treisenberg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public. Yes, tonight's first public hearing is for a contiguous annexation petition request. It is located at 2214 Vandora Springs Road. The petition has been submitted by Brian and Melanie Reeve. This would be a voluntary contiguous annexation. Their property is right here off of Vandora Springs at the roundabout, currently comprises And just to give everybody a little bit of background, on this particular request, the, both the water and public sewer are directly adjacent to the property, running through the Vandora Springs right-of-way. So whenever a property is going to connect, they are required to submit an annexation petition as part of the memorandum of understanding or agreement that we have with the City of Raleigh Public Utilities Department. So being that the utilities were directly adjacent, the connection was required by both town and city policy, and thus then the petition was required to be filed. There is no mandate that the annexation actually happen, but they do have to file for it. So the property is currently in our town ETJ, but would be incorporated into the town's primary corporate limits if approved. So tonight, we would finish conducting, hopefully, and close the public hearing, and then consider adoption potentially of the annexation ordinance with an effective date of today. That is included in your packet. And I believe that Mr. Reeves is here, so I think he has something that he would like to ask as well.
Excellent. Please approach the podium, sir. If you would state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Reeve. The address is 160 Cedar Croft Drive. I actually live currently at 100 Demos Circle in Garner. So, thank you very much, Jeff. Good evening, everyone. I have been absolutely blown away at Jeff's professionalism and his team. It's been an absolute pleasure kind of getting to this point, so I'm very thankful for them and thankful for the chance to be here. So, as Jeff mentioned, we had to petition for annexation because we were required to connect to water and sewer. We did ask for a permit for a well and septic system, and of course, we're denied that because of the ordinance required us to connect. We do not desire to be annexed. We request that you don't annex us. I don't know if I've got the correct wording there, but, and so, so that's what we would actually request, to not be annexed.
Okay, but thanks. It's not often we get people coming here asking us not to do something. But just for the record, the way I understand it, and Jeff or Brian, please correct me if I'm wrong, but in order for you to be able to buy water and sewer services through the town, you have to ask for annexation, and if we reject the annexation, then you can buy those services, but at a higher price than you would than if you were also paying property taxes.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Don't have to send the police out to look after you if you're not in our city limits. That's better for us. You have a pretty rowdy reputation, Brian, is all I can say. So, if we don't have to pick up your trash or send our police, we might be glad to not annex you and just sell you the water and sewer.
Yes, sir.
Am I on the right track here?
Yes, sir. You're doing great.
Okay. With that being said, I'll ask council members if you have any questions for the applicant here.
A member of the Optimist Club, so curious about what your plans are for use.
Absolutely. We are currently about 43% complete with a single home. Because of other ordinances, we have to have at least 20 feet for a home to be on it, so we only have 30 feet. So there is no other plans, and so we will be good neighbors to the Optimist Club for a very long time.
Any other questions from the council?
Is that the two houses down, that paved drive going down?
It is a paved drive. There are three houses on, three houses on the road itself, and that one very close is on Vandora Springs.
Gotcha.
So we're on the right. It's nice and white because of the wrapping, and you can about see it from the roundabout.
Any other questions? Any summary, Mr. Treisenberg?
No, just that in talking with the town attorney, we're not aware of any precedent for this, that this has been done before. Not to say that it hasn't, but just something to consider, because this could potentially result in a donut hole at some point, but that's okay too.
Okay with the donut holes? Okay, thank you.
I mean, we shouldn't be okay with the donut hole, because we're asking to extend our ETJ and fill in donut holes. So, we shouldn't be doing that, and I appreciate your request there, Mr. Reeve, but I move that we approve the ordinance to extend it to the corporate limits 2024-5257, because that's the policy, and we do not want to create donut holes.
So there's a motion to approve the annexation, even though the landholder does not want that annexation. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it just for debate.
Okay. There's a motion made by Mr. Singleton, seconded by Mr. Dellinger. Now we can have a discussion of the pros and cons of the annexation. Any other observations or discussion?
Just wondering why we had a discussion at the retreat about ETJ and extending it, if you're not going to do it and extend it at some time, and it has to be a voluntary annexation like Mr. Reeves is doing, we can't go and annex it just like it used two years ago. But that's the policy we're trying to get, to fill in donut holes, then this is simple. That's the policy that was talked about at the retreat and how to move forward. So, if you don't want to follow that, that's fine. And we don't need to extend the ETJ, because you're talking out of both sides of your mouth.
We've had some discussion. Any other discussion from the councilman or questions for the applicant or Mr. Treisenberg?
Just a comment. I think, you know, while we have some policies, we have to make room for exceptions to some when they make sense. It is unusual, but I don't think that it sets an unreasonable, it doesn't set a precedent. We can evaluate other cases on a case-by-case basis, and it's a given, the tax situation, the taxes we have, they can be unprecedentedly high. He's nodding. They're very high. And that's a good option, to have good neighbors and still keep density down, and so I don't really have a problem with it, so.
Other questions, comments from council? Okay, my only question would be, and one of you can probably answer it, or Ms. Jones could probably, if he's not annexed and he is in the ETJ, any further rezoning would come before this council?
Yes, that's correct.
As it will continue to be in the ETJ and subject to zoning coming through the council. So if he decides to put in a trailer park or a chicken farm or something, he'll have to be back in here.
Yes, and there is an ability for what's called an involuntary annexation, and usually most municipalities don't do that, because then the municipality bears the cost of the water and sewer extensions. So in this case, if he's, if this property is connected to water and sewer, that disincentive might not exist in the future.
Mr. Treisenberg, would you like to make any observations based on the conversations we've just had?
The only other thing that really jumped out to staff was that, you know, the Cedar Croft Drive, the property's across the street theoretically, were annexed. So we just wanted to be sure that you all understood the map in that regard. These properties over here.
Those have been annexed at their request.
Similar case, but they, that obviously had three or four houses instead of just one.
And likewise, the Optimist Club tract to the right of this is in the ETJ, not annexed, not in the city limits either.
Correct.
Not in the city limits.
Always remember, Mr. Reeve, you can write off your property taxes, you can't write off your order bill. We had that used years ago, when Mr. Adams served on here as CPA, he sent that to a person one time, who came with a request, that you can write off your property taxes, but not your order bill.
So it stands there.
Price it out, that, how much it's going to run, you'd run that way down there?
We've already ran the lines. It's 1,100 feet, so our water meter is close to the road. In fact, Raleigh came out to set our water meter. They could not find our box, because it was next to the house, 1,100 feet away, and they find us. And so, they couldn't find our house, because it was so far away from the point of water. And so it's 1,100 feet, it cost us about $25,000.
To run the water.
To run the water and the sewer lines only. We still have to put in a pump to get it back to where it goes, and so, my issue is not, not the public utilities. We love Garner. We love being here. This is our home, and it will be until I pass away. The issue was that we had no choice. We wanted to do a well and a septic, but the ordinance says that we must connect. And so, we had to petition, because we either don't build a house, or we build a house with no water. And so that was our choice. And so, everything points to, it's a voluntary annexation, and so, we didn't feel as if we had too many choices. Yes, it does sound double-minded to fill out a petition and then stand here and ask not be annexed, but that was not any of my choices. And so I'm here because I'm following the ordinance, and so.
Thank you. I think we understand.
Yes, sir.
Are there other questions from council? Seeing none, I think I'll ask for a voice vote on this, one at a time, just to go on the record. And the motion is to approve the annexation that's before us, even though that's not what the landowner wants. Okay, so the motion is to approve the annexation. Mr. Vance, are you in favor of the motion to annex, to approve this annexation? Aye for yes.
Nay.
Mr. Dellinger?
No.
Okay, we have two nays and one aye. Mr. Singleton?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Much as I'm a strong supporter of this ETJ thing, you, I understand where you're coming from, and I'll go with the nay.
That's three nays as recorded, so the motion fails, we will not be annexed in this property.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for going by the rules.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and that closes, that's the end of that hearing there. Thank you. Okay? And the next on the public hearings, we have a Tier One Conditional Rezoning Request related to 312 U.S. Highway 70 East, and we have one of our newer planning employees, Ms. Erin Joseph, our Assistant Planning Director, who we're delighted to have on board. Erin has years of experience in doing this. We're fortunate to have her on our team, and we're glad to have her do the presentation on this Conditional Rezoning Request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members and public. Happy to be here this evening. My name is Erin Joseph, and I will be presenting the rezoning case CZ 24-001. The property is located at 312 U.S. 70 East and consists of 5.04 acres. It is currently zoned commercial mixed-use and light industrial with no existing uses on the site. Tracy Dunson, excuse me, Dunson Berry Tate of Hawkins Companies LLC has petitioned the council on behalf of the property owner, ANH Hospitality LLC, to rezone the parcel to commercial mixed-use conditional. The request is a Tier One Conditional District Rezoning that includes a few proposed uses and conditions, but please keep in mind that this request is a Tier One, and it does not include, nor is it required, to have a site-specific plan, master plan. Again, this site is zoned commercial mixed-use and light industrial. The CMX district is designed to accommodate general commercial, retail, retail and service activities that serve the whole community with a wide range of users, even drawing from surrounding communities. Commercial mixed-use districts should have good automobile access, transit accessibility, and pedestrian connectivity. The light industrial district is a district that is limited in its industrial uses and does not include uses that are noxious or offensive. Uses are restricted to fully enclosed operations with no outdoor storage. The site is surrounded by commercial mixed-use fronting on U.S. 70, and on the eastern and western property lines, there is commercial mixed-use conditional, and on the southern tip of the site is light industrial. The latest traffic count for U.S. 70 was 32,500 annual average daily trips in 2021, and is estimated to be about 34,000 today. Looking at the framework from our comprehensive land use plan, we looked at U.S. 70, which is a major thoroughfare and handles high volumes of traffic and connects a series of activity centers. As you can see on the map, we do have along U.S. 70, we have the neighborhood activity center, the community activity center, and then the regional employment activity center to the southeast. The site is actually positioned within the edge of the community activity center, where the focal point is centered near East Garner Road and New Rand Road. Even though this site is within the community activity center, U.S. 70 and rail, and the railroad tracks that runs along U.S. 70 separates the site from the focal point of that particular activity center, which we believe may gravitate more towards a regional employment, the regional employment activity center to the southeast. The applicant has narrowed the uses to six out of 60 possible uses within the CMX district, and has offered five profit conditions outside of the permitted uses. The staff report identifies the six uses and includes a detailed listing of the uses within the CMX and the LI district. Multifamily, group care, hospice, hotel, medical office are all included in those six conditions. The five profit conditions are housing design for senior community, a minimum of four stories for multifamily building, pedestrian connection or sidewalk to Wake Med property to the east of the site, and a minimum of 1,800 square feet of interior recreational and social space, and also a minimum of 4,000 square feet of exterior recreational and social space. A neighborhood meeting was held on February 15th, and there were 10 attendees at that meeting, and the full details of that meeting is included and attached to the staff report. Upon review of this request, staff has made several observations. The layering of the community activity center with the retail character typology and its proximity to the regional employment activity center does suggest some support for greater massing and intensity on the site. Furthermore, without a master plan commitment, it is difficult to evaluate some of the metrics in the comp plan. However, some are implied due to the unique shape of the site. For instance, the topography of the parcel lends more to a setback versus a built-to In reviewing the framework consistency, staff evaluated seven growth framework criteria. Out of those seven, three were strongly consistent, one modestly consistent, two split, and one Out of those seven, three were strongly consistent, one modestly consistent, two split, and one modestly inconsistent. And just to expound on the moderately inconsistent, the transportation choices criteria was rated as such due to the absence of a separate infrastructure for pedestrians and cyclists. It was noted that this is a pre-existing condition and did not warrant a strongly inconsistent rating. Reviewing the land use and community character consistency, eight criteria were determined to be applicable or possibly, or possibly too meaningful to address. Out of the eight, four were modestly consistent, three were split, and one was modestly inconsistent. And there was a bonus or extra credit given due to the infill criteria for expanding a use without straining existing infrastructure. The modest inconsistency is due to the, that the proposal could be seen as a shift toward reclassifying an activity center to residential since it is likely not to be a mixed-use development. But at the same time, recognizing that any residential use should be subservient to the non-residential uses in the area. Moreover, the limited proffered conditions reduce the opportunity for more detailed scoring. So with all things considered, in the absence of any strong non-supporting criteria and a modest level of consistency with the plan's growth framework, staff believes that a finding of consistency could be made should council determine that the proposed list of uses and conditions may advance the public interest, particularly in advancing, advancing housing options for low-income seniors. For further details on this consistency review, please see the attachment to the staff report. The next procedural steps are to finish conducting this hearing this evening. Refer the case to the Planning Commission for recommendation and determination on plan consistency and recommendation of approval or denial of the case. Well, then back to county council to receive the Planning Commission's recommendation and make a determination, determination of reasonableness and merits to the public interest and to move forward with approval or denial of the rezoning. This concludes the presentation for CZ 2401. The applicant is here this evening and will also speak to the request to rezone 312 U.S. 70 East from commercial mixed use and light industrial to commercial mixed use conditional, and to answer any questions you may have. Thank you, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Are there questions at this point for Ms. Joseph?
No questions. We'd be delighted.
I have one question, just to confirm. Ms. Joseph, there's only one access point on 70 because the other frontage on Highway 70 has topography issues and a stream. So there's, it's not, that's not feasible to make two access points. It's just one.
Right, that's correct. It's just one access point.
All right, thank you.
I have a question and I may have to hold over until the applicant speaks, but this is really a potentially residential development. It's rezoning to mixed use, but it's potentially dominantly going to be residential use. If it were strictly a residential property, we'd be trying to make some type of pedestrian connection to proposed greenways or outlined greenways. And I was reviewing the map on the east and west, east and south side, it's neighboring Wake Med property. And there's Mallard's Creek that goes down there. And then a quarter of a mile, it's attaching to this other larger Wake Med property project. And so I'm kind of, maybe the applicant can talk about it. Where's this sort of thought, especially when you're having a senior community? There's no way to get then to White Oak or this other development without getting in a car. It seems like there's an opportunity, maybe if it's going to be a more residential use, whether it's housing or motel or hotel, to have some type of prepared easements. Working with Wake Med to get part of that, working with some of these other neighborhoods to get some connection there. And that's that walkability pedestrian. One of the biggest frustrations is we built this true hotel, and you've got to get in your car to go to White Oak. And it's like, doesn't look, it's, it's not integrated. And so I'm kind of just wondering what the predominant use will be if they're preference and just kind of see if there's a way to integrate some easements or trails to the back of the property that in the future could connect. But I just kind of want to make sure, was, is it the reason that it was commercial, the, a commercial rezoning that we didn't sort of look at it through that residential lens?
They, one of the conditions that was proffered was to make that pedestrian connection to the future medical offices and potentially to the Wake Med. So it tried to address that in a limited scope, but without the master plan, it's not laid out in as much detail. And of course, there would need to be easements if it was crossing or, you know, at least if they built up to the property line and, and that sort of thing. But that level of detail has not been ironed out under a tier one rezoning. But they, they did ensure to include as a proffered condition, some sort of pedestrian connection.
And that makes sense on the 70 side because it's adjoined to the unbuilt-out Wake Med lot. I'm also referencing the larger Wake Med hospital that's a little bit further south and finding some way to work with Wake Med to get a connection because it'd probably go across their property or maybe it would go across, I don't know where it would go. But I'll, I'll ask the applicant and see what their thoughts are. Thank you.
Thank you.
If no further questions, we'll ask the applicant to speak. Yes, if you would introduce yourself and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Tracy Dunson Berry Tate with Halcon Development. That's 2615 Anderson Highway, Suite B, Powhatan, Virginia, 23139. Thank you, Erin. I'm not sure how to work this little thing, so just bear with me. We'll see if we can get through it. Thank you, first of all, mayor and board for allowing us this opportunity. We did want to take this time to at least introduce ourselves to you and tell you a little bit more about the development. I know a site plan wasn't required for this tier one, but we do have a layout that I want to show you so you can see what we have in mind. And I do want to introduce, I have with me tonight Matt Louder with Bowman Engineering, who's our civil engineer from here in Raleigh, and also Edith Pittman with Central Developers, who's one of the development partners. So we'll all be here to answer any questions you or the community has throughout the public hearing. I just want to introduce our development team overall, the ones who couldn't be here also. We have Halcon Development, that's me, Trinity Housing Development, and Central Developers. And between all of us, we have developed about 8,000 units. I have developed at least 50 in North Carolina. And Trinity has developed Oliver, they've developed six states. Texas, Missouri, Colorado, Arizona, Georgia, and North Carolina. Together, we have developed communities in Greensboro and Fayetteville. And we've actually been asked back, and we've done a second one in Greensboro because the city was very happy with what we did there. One thing I do have to mention is that I am actually from Garner. I grew up in Garner. I graduated from what used to be called Garner Senior High School. And then I went right down the road to that school who just was able to finally win another ACC championship. So I had to, I had to mention that. You know, I had to mention that.
What year did you graduate from Garner?
88.
Okay. I graduated in 80.
Okay. So it's just, it's great to be back here. And Edith also lived in the Garner area for 40 years and just recently moved away when her husband passed away. But we both were involved somewhat in Old School Commons and the development of that because I used to work for Regentancy Development, which was one of the main developers. And I worked with Rex Todd, who I miss a lot. And I'm glad to be here in the Ronnie Williams Center because Ronnie was a friend of our family. And so it's nice to be back here. But it's good to be back here to talk, and Edith was the executive director of the Garner Arts Association also at that time. And they were really involved in, you know, Old School Commons with the, you know, historic auditorium. So we're glad to be back here talking to you about senior housing again. Let's see. On the screen, there are some examples of some other senior communities we have done. This one will be a little bit different because we're trying to keep in line with kind of the style of the hotel and with what you guys are looking for with the four stories and making it more of a a larger city, urban development, infill development. The way this came about, this, the conception of the property, basically, we were looking for a site in Wake County. We knew there was a really severe need for affordable housing here and housing for seniors, which is one thing we love to do. And in talking with the broker, the, before the property was zoned to allow for a hotel, and then the pandemic hit, so they weren't able to fulfill their vision of building the hotel. So they thought they would pivot. And so they thought this would be a great pivot, and we thought so too, for senior housing in one building. So our design, and you'll see it in a minute, it sort of looks like the hotel. So that's what we were trying to be consistent with. And Erin did a great job going over the site and everything, so I'll just skip over these. The reason I wanted to show this one is this was our original site plan that we took to the community meeting. And the building is pretty much where the hotel was. And like Mr. Singleton said, we can only have one entrance, unfortunately, but we do only have 64 units. And this is for seniors. And we've built a lot of senior developments over the years. And we, from time to time, will survey them. We surveyed them a few years back. And only about half of the seniors usually have cars. So that's one good thing about this because there will not be a lot of vehicles. And then the next slide I'm showing you is the site plan that we have changed based on the community meeting. Some of the feedback we received was concerning a deceleration lane on Highway 70. Obviously, everyone's concerned about, you know, turning off of that road. So we are showing that as well as a pedestrian access, as Mr. Ellinger mentioned, to the Wake Med site. Now, we have not explored with Wake Med yet about getting any type of easement. So we're just showing an access, you know, to their property. Our understanding is that that's going to eventually become more medical offices. And so we would definitely, you know, be willing to explore that with them and see if we could work out some type of easement before they even develop their future medical offices. But that is one reason we thought this was a great site because it is located beside of Wake Med. I know that that's going to become medical offices later, but that's even better, really, because no one really wants to go to the hospital, you know what I mean? But they, everybody needs to go to the doctor. And it's only a mile from the senior center, and you guys have a great senior center here. And so that's one thing we really liked because, you know, my mom used to be involved with the senior center. My stepmom was involved with it, used to dance there. So I think that's great. And just the fact that it's very convenient for families who want, who are coming home from work and wanting to stop by and visit their loved one or pick them up and take them out to eat or take them to a doctor's appointment, we thought that would be very convenient. And the property, we can look more at the site, but let's face it, it does have a lot of topo. And there is the stream buffer, so there's really not a lot that, there's not a lot of movement that you can have on the site. Oh, one thing, let me go back to this really quick. I'm sorry. Okay, we did add a little dog park. That's that dark green area down below the parking area. That was one thing that came up at the community meeting. Some of the residents asked about the possibility of that, and we thought that was a great idea. So we did add that into the site plan there. This was what was approved previously, the hotel. And as Erin mentioned, you know, the site is split zoned, CMX and light industrial. So there are a lot of different uses that could be there. Actually, our development, 64 units could go there, you know, in the CMX portion. But the LI makes it a little bit, you know, with the buffers and everything, it just makes it a little bit more difficult. So for us to do the parking, we wanted to do and everything with just a lot and not like a parking garage. We really needed to get it rezoned. We are proposing only 64 units for seniors, one and two bedrooms. The rents would be between, this is what we're proposing, this could change, but between 558 and 1,440. We would be targeting this to be affordable for a lot of seniors. And our estimated cost for the project would be around $16,800,000. And we do not have a nonprofit involved in the development. So we would be paying taxes on this. That's just the site location again, site amenities. This is a closer up of the design. And elevations. One thing I do want to point out, we did have a market study done recently, and I thought this was very interesting. I knew that there was a strong need, but for exactly what we had proposed at the AMI we proposed at, there is a need, and this is taken into consideration what you already have in the pipeline, for 599 units for seniors, so the exact type that we're proposing. So that's a lot of units. And your market is expected to add, you know, more 55 and older households to the area. The market study was glowing. I mean, they thought that everything was great the way we proposed it. And this just shows that there is a very strong need for affordable housing. And they mentioned that when Pennington Grove opened up, they leased all 83 units in two months. I mean, that is unheard of, you know, to lease up that quickly. But that just shows you, you know, the need that's there. And they leased up their second phase in four months. So that's extremely, extremely quick. Our development timeline, just so you'll know, if everything goes as planned, we would start construction in around April of 2025. These things do take a long time, and it probably would not finish until September of 2026. So that's the timeframe we're looking at if we stay on the schedule we're on right now. That is really all I have. If you have any other questions or if anyone from the community has any, we would certainly be glad to address them.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. If you'll stand by just a minute, we'll see if council members have some particular questions for you. Start this end.
I have no questions.
Just a comment and question and suggestion. One, you know, the need for affordable housing is tremendous. And we're trying to get that right here ourselves. And so the more we can get, the better, and, and the more we can commit to it and make sure that we're doing it right. And it's good to see projects like this in Garner that have done it right and got the right. Seeing how that median income has increased has changed what that means for affordability. So you're hitting the right places to get people real affordable housing. So really appreciate that. The only other suggestion and recommendation I'm making, it might be something that comes up at site plan, is trying to find some way to get a walking path. And again, there's no clear way, and I was talking with our Parks and Rec and staff earlier about where are greenway paths? And there's nothing so set, but there is. is Mallards Creek. And maybe it's coming across Wake Med's property, having a conversation with them. And, um, because I'm sure they would want to try to find some way to connect to their own hospital, you know, when they build that. So find a way to get somewhere in the back end of your property, just some paths, at least on paper, laid out, or when you're grading inside, just to get, make sure you can make those connections. Because I think that's the, the one weakness of the site is being on seventy. And that sort of, you kind of mentioned it, half-half cars. So if in five, six, seven years, they're able to just kind of walk into a park and not have to get into a car.
That would be great.
It would be amazing. So that'd be my only feedback and recommendation going forward.
And we'll definitely explore that. And we want to, as we do more studies on the site and have the engineer do more, you know, work, we're definitely going to look at that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Questions?
I just, no questions. I'm just glad to see more senior housing, this issue being addressed. My oldest son is a doctor. And he told me years ago that modern medicine was going to keep me here. And we need a place to live. So.
And it's great with the VA Hospital, too. I didn't mention that. But that's one thing we're so excited about. When my stepdad had to drive all the way to Durham, I mean, that is, I mean, you know how it is to drive to Durham. So I think that's wonderful. And that'll be another plus for this community.
Questions, comments?
She answered them already. Thank you.
My compliments. The, uh, I know the senior facility down on Timber Drive East right there, you know, I remember that opened up and it filled up amazingly fast. And so many of us have got family will fit in this category. And I was talking to a lady today. She said, well, my, we had to put a mobile home in for medical shoot. But when Dad passed away, her income is so low, but it fits in these parameters that you've got there. We had no opportunity to do anything. And there are a lot of people that way. And the growth we, we were experiencing Wake County seniors, we're going to be growing more and more as I'm speaking for myself, you know, we're kind of aging into there. And having this close to the hospital and, uh, and I agree with Mr. Dillinger, if we get this connectivity to hospital shopping center, and who knows, we might have some golf carts down here one day. I got shot down the last time, but hey, that would work just fine for something like this, is what I'm thinking. Might get somebody to bite on it the next time. But your timing is great and great location. And, uh, and I think it will do well here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I think we'll close the public hearing. And then we'll have, see if we have a motion or some discussion up here. So thank you very much for the information.
Thank you.
Fantastic. With that being said, is there a motion related to this project?
I believe to refer the, to the, to the planning commission for consistency review and recommendations.
Thank you. A motion made to refer it to the planning commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Behringer. That being said, it's open for discussion. Is there any more discussion that we need to, to make related to the motion? Any other comments, questions? Okay, in that case, I will, we'll call for, uh, call for the vote on this. All in favor of the motion to pass this along to the planning commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. This will be referred to the planning commission where there will be a public hearing. There will be more input, perhaps more adjustment. And it will eventually come back to this council for a final decision. So thank you very much, everyone who's put this together. And thank you very much and congratulate you, Erin, on your first presentation before our council here. Very informative, very, very, very helpful. So that's the end of that one. Okay. That being said, we'll move along to the first item on the new business list. And this concerns a project called the park at Garner Station. We've seen it before. We've been working on it a long time. It's gone to the planning commission, who took two different meetings to try to evaluate it completely and look at it every angle. And the reason why is because not only is it an extremely important project in an extremely sensitive part of town or historic downtown, but it's also a complex project. It has many elements, many angles. It provokes a lot of strong feelings in a lot of ways. And we've had a lot of input from the community, a lot of input over the two years that this has been in process, particularly in the last few months in a number of ways. And while this is not a public hearing, there was a public hearing before this body previously. There was a public hearing in the planning commission, in fact, too, I think, as well as neighborhood meetings. So we will not be having a, a public hearing tonight. But we will be hearing from our planning staff with the latest revisions, the latest adjustments that's been made. We will be hearing from the applicant and their representatives. This has gone through a lot of transformation over the last year and over the last six months in particular. And I've just got to weigh in just a little bit on this to reemphasize what an important part of town this is to us and what a unique opportunity we have here with this particular assemblage. I've seen a lot of growth, a lot of change, a lot of adjustment in the last six months, based on feedback from the community, feedback from the council, feedback from the planning commission. There's a lot of great things about this project. I believe it brings a lot of vitality to our downtown, our historic area. You'll see the revised division with more commercial, retail, restaurant service, where there might be an ice cream shop, might be a pizza place, a hair salon, in conjunction with the various kinds of housing. I think the developer has listened and brought a number of different types of housing from the multifamily apartment or condo type to different townhouse or, or other type dwelling things, different price ranges. I guess I got the biggest visual view from this when we did a little drone shot a month or two ago from downtown. And it's a drone lifted off from, from Garner Road up toward the water tower. At just above, a little higher than the water tower, you could look around and you could see Raleigh in the distance. And by Raleigh, I mean high rises, urban. We're just that close. Five miles as a crow flies or less to downtown Raleigh. Could look around and, and I could almost see where I grew up in Forest Hills, one of the first residential subdivisions from the nineteen fifties. I could look over toward Cloverdale and, and I could see the trees and some house tops over. And that was really the first residential subdivision in Garner, again, in the early fifties. It's there now. Has wonderful houses, great potential for restoring place. But what dawned on me, here, here's the urban, here's the classic suburban, Forest Hills, Cloverdale, large lots. They were large lots because there was no sewer then. You had to have a large enough lot to have septic tanks. They're over in Forest Hills, by the time we came along in the late fifties, it did have public water. In fact, was now known as Lakeside Drive that cuts across Forest Hills, was officially named Waterline Drive because that's where the main water line went through. But later they classed it up and called it Lakeside. That sounded a little more romantic. So that's over there. And but then, looking down from the water tower or looking down from about that elevation from the drone, you see historic downtown. You see how the railroad evolved parallel to the existing Highway seventy. You see how the stores and the shops and the post office and the bank and the churches developed along the one side of Main Street. You see how the, the village grew, focused around the restaurants, around the churches, around the railroad. It was all focused there. You see, it's not the suburban homes on the big lots. It's not the urban towers in Raleigh. It's the village. And this is what we want to try to preserve, the feeling of a village where you know your neighbor, you help each other, even though we're going through radical explosive growth and everything in Wake County, changes upon us. But we have to find a way to maintain our village feel. And if we can't do it down here in the, in the downtown area, then where can we? We have giant shopping centers. We have five forty coming around on the south. We know what that's going to look like. All you have to do is go to five forty north and see what we're going to look like in five years and ten years. But we have a unique opportunity here with this village concept to do something really special. And, and we're trying to find the balance here. We get so much input, so many of you had so many feelings. Quite frankly, the strongest feelings, the loudest feedback that I've gotten is save the trails. Whatever you do, save Hilliard Creek Trail and those trails through the woods. And I'm glad to see that what our applicant has put together seems to not only preserve those trails, but in certain ways even enhance those with those cross connections. So that's just my, my little take. We have a tough decision here before us. And so a lot of, a lot of details are yet to be tied up. But with that preface, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff with the planning department to give us a little overview. And then we'll be calling on the applicants and their representatives to give us some details, to explain a little bit more to you, how this has evolved and how this could fit in well with our historic village downtown. Mr. Trezenberg?
You forgot to say something like the drone that you saw with the drone. That was trees and green. Just remember that. I think the people in North Carolina will be a lot happier with trees and green than they would be with mass development. But anyway.
There'll be lots of talk about trees and greens and affordable housing and.
The drone saw that, too.
And, and like I say, there's many complexities. There's, there's many elements. And we hope to address those here in the coming thirty minutes or so, because we do have some other projects that deserve some, some consideration and some dialogue, too. So we'll, we'll start with the presentation from Mr. Trezenberg from the applicants. And then we'll have some questions from council. And then we'll see if we want to take an action, decide our next steps. Then, then we'll determine what comes after that. So Mr. Trezenberg, I'm passing to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'll try to be fairly brief in my comments and let the applicant focus on the changes that they, that had, they've made and has transpired over the last few months. Just as a reminder, this is a ninety-six point seven three acre site being proposed by Gander Development. The request in there, I'll just note for you, it started out, again, as a mixed use development consisting of what was expected to be three hundred and fifty townhomes, seven hundred apartments, and twenty thousand square feet of commercial space. Over, over the last few months, that has been reworked to now be six hundred apartments and up to thirty-five thousand square feet of commercial space. And just a reminder again of the area that we're talking about. Garner Rec Park is here. The elementary school park here and Crete Road Elementary itself, and the Jürgen Park site of note.
Jeff, I have a quick question.
Sure.
You know, may have misread, but it says a maximum of thirty thousand square feet. Is there a minimum in here as well?
Too much. There is not a minimum. There is just a maximum. So that's something that could be.
Sounds like a problem.
Yeah, that's something we could address.
Thank you.
Yep. And again, here is the zoning and surrounding land use. Moving to the conditions that they had proposed, this is where you'll see most of the changes. They are not illustrating any single family detached in the current version of their plan, but they have added it in as a possibility of something that they could change to in the future. So that has been added as a potential permitted use. No changes to the rest of it there. In condition number two, because they did put in the wording for single family, this used to be the townhome section of the conditions. This would now encompass both, uh, single family detached and townhomes. So you see that trade out in some places. In terms of the vinyl, they have added shutters, but we have taken soffits out of the equation. Vinyl soffits are one of those things that can promote the spread of fire. It's great if you have the hardy plank siding, but if you have a vinyl soffit and the fire gets to the soffit, then you're right there at the roof. So that is something that has been discussed. You see some of the others here that have been added that are highlighted in yellow. There is a mix of two and three story dwelling units in the townhome section. They, so there would be a variety of heights and massing. Where there is a building of five or more townhome units, they've incorporated offsets. I will note that the, um, the illustration in reviewing that does show offsets more frequent than that. So this is another condition potentially that could be strengthened further to make sure that the two match. And a minimum of two of the following exterior materials would be applied to the front facade. So trying to there to get at some variety in those front facades as you go from unit to unit. The main roof of each unit would have some variation in how those are treated as well. So you wouldn't get the same type of roof treatment over every unit. Also would be raised a minimum of twelve inches from grade. So there would be a step up and that exposed foundation would be covered in masonry. So it would not be exposed. The two, the two dwelling units, the paired homes would allow for flush entry, though, in the idea of trying to serve the older populations and those who have other types of mobility issues. They also added some, uh, conditions here for both the doors, the entrances and the garage doors that are fairly typical of things that we have asked for in the past in that regard. The number of units that would have at least two car garages would be fifty percent of all units.
Jeff, I have a question on the garages. So they came in under the new, the old UDO. Where are they on garage sizes?
On garage sizes.
I know we made a particular effort during the rewrite to make the sizes bigger because as we've done tours, they're too small.
Yes, because we have to, if they're nine by, nine by eighteen, they tend not to have enough room for those, uh, the carts. Yes. So yes, that is a good question that we would need to ask them as well. A minimum of twenty-five percent of the units that front on active space would have the sixty square foot covered front porch or patio or in lieu of the front stoop. And a minimum of ten percent of the units adjacent to Street A would have that same sixty square foot covered front or corner porch patio as well. So trying to break up somewhat that front elevation, which can get flat. We also have noticed that that sometimes can happen on the rear as well. So something else to check on.
Would they do any covered rear porches, screened porches? I think one of another things we noticed is in some of the neighborhoods, it's a really great amenity and feature to have a screened porch, whereas some just have slab. Is that included in here as a condition or not addressed?
Covered. So covered would include enclosed. So if they did one that was enclosed, we would count that. But the, it does not require that level at the way it's worded currently.
Thank you.
In terms of the multifamily, again, some of the wording was changed just because multifamily doesn't necessarily include just apartments. It could include condos and other types of multifamily. So that wording was changed out. And then again, multifamily buildings that front the collector streets, they've committed to, again, the porches and stoops to try to give the apartment, the apartment or condos at that first level, a little bit more of that single family or townhome type individual feel to it. So again, you wouldn't have just a, a porch. You know, a lot of times you'll see the, the porch from the apartment unit. So this one, give it a, a back door as well appearance. So you would have that projecting element that the, that the tenant could use to access the sidewalk. They also on the non-residential committed to no EPIS or synthetic stucco in the first four feet above grade. So again, kind of getting at some of the fire type of issues. Again, you want to keep the flammables at least four feet off of the ground. No major changes in the rest until we get to number fifteen. There, they have maintained the condition for the fifty foot perimeter buffer against the parcels that they had specified before. Sixteen through eighteen are all new as well. And I'll let the, let the applicant speak more specifically to those. But they are related to Greenway's multi-use paths and the connections for those. And then number twenty-one, which addresses the affordable housing condition, where they have up that to five percent of their units. And two percent will target those that are earning eighty percent or less. And two percent will target those that are earning eighty percent or less. And three percent would target those families in the eighty-two, one-hundred. That's where those stand at this point. I did just want to revisit the traffic impact analysis. There was some question at the time, this was going, preparing to go to planning commission, and we were able to get, the applicant was able to get confirmation. There was some question about this improvement at New Rand Road on eastbound East Garner, as to whether or not that hundred-foot dedicated right turn lane could be added. That is in the railroad right-of-way, and initially, the North Carolina Railroad suggested that they might not allow for that. But the applicant was able to talk with them and ultimately get permission to build that, which we felt was much needed. So again, just a reminder, the overall proposal has been reduced to six-hundred apartment units and up to thirty-five thousand square feet on the commercial. Here is that master plan. So this does work in tandem with the written conditions, and it does, you know, carry some weight with it as well with what they've illustrated. But you see the retail portion up here along East Garner Road, transitioning back mostly into the apartments. There are some townhomes here along that eastern edge, and then the mix of townhomes in two clusters here in the back. Outlined in green are some of the trails that do exist back there today. And some of this would be involved in the discussion of any potential swap and land transfer that would bring some of those trails under public ownership. In terms of the building elevations, they have added a couple of different townhome precedent images, as well as a couple more of the apartment style. Then I'll just recap the two planning commission meetings real briefly. Again, they're detailed in your staff report. There were several clarifying questions in both, I won't go into those. There was talk and discussion about the potential conflicts and challenges of building enough commercial to support downtown rather than competing against it. So that was a good discussion that was had. There were inquiries from members about projects that the developer has done that are similar. They also asked a number of questions about different things particularly related to some of the open spaces and road improvements and recreation spaces. There was an emphasis placed on the need to use the open space to make east-west connections across the site, and the need for detail in the architectural conditions across all building types. In terms of the public who was there at that first meeting, they did note, those who spoke, that the changes to Garner Rec Park would be moving away from the original intention. There were concerns voiced about road safety and traffic, and asking whether or not traffic calming could be included in the new thoroughfare that would traverse the site. After that first meeting, the commission voted to continue it. At that second meeting, there were a number of things that were acknowledged as being appreciated that the developer had addressed. There were still, though, more clarification questions that were asked. There was a stated desire for the townhomes to change on the interior to provide accessibility and livability for a wider range of populations. There were, again, questions on the TIA and traffic and signalization that were a little more pointed and specific. And questioning whether or not other types of housing had been considered, like small-format multifamily or small-lot, single-family. And there was some concern about the townhomes in the back seeming to be a little bit isolated from the rest of the site. So again, the public, there were more concerns stated about the road going through Garner Rec Park again, and the history of that program and how that park was set up. A concern about needing additional lanes on Creech, and as well as just the project not seeming to respect the history of North Garner generally. The commission did move to a vote that night. And we considered with them the plan consistency. The density for this is higher. Again, this is a public hearing that happened before the new comprehensive plan, so staff is evaluating this against the previous comprehensive plan. It is more dense than what was recommended in that plan, so it is clearly inconsistent with that part. We did note that the density has fallen from ten-point-eight-five, it's now sitting at about nine-point-seven-one at the max. In terms of the transportation plan, all of the things that TRC has talked about with them from the transportation plan have been addressed, and so that part has been found to be consistent. And as well as the Parks, Rec, and Greenway Cultural Resources Master Plan, it wasn't within a park search area, but it did include a Greenway off-site path corridor. And there were accommodations for that, so it was agreed that the plan as currently would be consistent with that plan. This did go to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. They had suggested at the time that some land dedication would be optimal. There was a version of the plan that included additional ballfields, but since that meeting, some additional feedback was given to the applicant, and so those were then again removed. So at the commission meeting, there was an initial motion to recommend denial, but it died for lack of a second. There was an initial vote on the second motion to recommend approval. A couple of members abstained, and there was subsequently a revote on that second motion. It did come to you then again with a vote of four to three, four in favor and three opposed. And there is their consistency statement that we drafted for them and was the one that was ultimately included in the motion. It is now back here before this body for the reasonableness discussion. We did provide some staff commentary for you, just about some larger observations about the type of project that it is. But we have given you motions, both for inconsistent yet reasonable and inconsistent nor reasonable. In your motion worksheet, you have those items from that comp plan, things that are, would be supportive of the first motion and things that would be supportive of the second motion. Again, that's what I have for you in terms of an update, and the applicant is here that can speak more directly to the changes that they have proposed.
Okay, and Mr. Trezenberg, thank you very much. While you're up there, do we have some questions directed toward Mr. Trezenberg before we hear from the applicant? Mr. Matthews?
Mr. Mayor, the same project has been going on for two years, and unfortunately, one of those developments got caught in the old UDO, going over to the new, and it's, it has been kind of an up-and-down situation, to put it mildly. And plus, the uniqueness of this development is, as we move forward, the growth in Garner is that we want our projects, developments, to be a cut above what you, the old way of doing business. And not, most certainly, we've met with the developer many times, and meetings now could, can be scheduled. They would listen to what we had to say and vice versa, and we can do these things now on a normal basis with projects, maybe six months down the road or what have you, with a tier-one conception. But they listened and came back with everything that we asked for, then sometimes we had to have a meeting in the minds, but we worked it all out and threw thick and thin. My question to you, Mr. Trezenberg, is, in your professional opinion, and that this project as it is right now, in your professional opinion, does it pretty much meet all the standards that we've set forth in far as the UDO, the Garner Forward Plan? And in your opinion, is this a good project based on everything you and your staff have taken up at this time?
So I would, I would offer that it, the proposal in the application meets what the UDO requires of it. We have not evaluated it formally against the new comprehensive plan. I would have to surmise that it is probably not consistent completely with either.
I'm sorry, I can't, can we?
I would say that it's not probably consistent with either. It's clearly, you know, above the density that the current, the effective plan requires. I don't know that it might not be dense enough for the new plan, but again, we have not reviewed it against that plan. We've reviewed it against the plan that's in, that this project is effective to. It is consistent with some things, but it's also inconsistent with the recommended density of that plan.
So it's caught between two plans, basically? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Pretty much.
Okay, tough nut to crack. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that correctly, and because, you know, people ask me questions, is this going to work? Is it not going to work? And, you know, and all, they see what we see, and in Wake County, this is somewhat the way things are going right now. If you try to find your two or three acres of land in Wake County, see how that works out for you, you're going to pay arm and a leg. And so as we grow seventy people a day, a lot of them come into Garner, we've got new hospitals coming, the Veterans Hospital, commercial business, we're growing over here, so. And these people got to have somewhere to stay, and I'm eager to hear on the, that they're very open and amenable to working with our workforce housing for our teachers' environment, which is very important. Just like the senior group coming in, that we can work with them so they can have a good place to stay and stay in Garner, which is very important. But I appreciate your comments, and I just want to make sure I was understanding, we're kind of working on two different plans here and trying to make it work somehow or others. So thank you for your comments and appreciate you and your staff.
Trezenberg, can you go back? You showed some photographs of buildings, both in a residential and a commercial format. Yes, I just wanted to make it known to the public, it's not shown on here, but in our agenda package, they're called precedent images. They're called inspirational imagery and single-family architecture inspiration. It does not say, because we cannot impose architectural standards because of state law on these projects. Most of what you've seen in the conditions is all that you can do, so just because it looks like that, doesn't mean it's going to look like that. And I was advised by one of my colleagues, who went and toured a development that we approved, this council approved a couple of years ago, and saw it today, and it don't look nothing like that. And the imagery that we saw was not what's out there. Anyway, growth, change is inevitable, growth is optional. And the type of growth that you have, because you can control it, is even more optional, so let's always remember that. This project is too dagum dense, and I told them, when we talked, you cut it from a thousand to five-hundred units, I'll be glad to support it, and never did. It's too dense. Just remember, in North Garner, I asked staff months ago, north of Garner Road from Cloverdale to Forty, there's approximately twenty-five-hundred residential units. This is a thousand. It'll grow by forty percent from one project on a ninety-acre piece of land, ninety-six-acre piece of land. Just remember that. It's what we're being asked to do. It's too dense, anyway. I'll go off a little bit later too, but anyway, that was a nice short one. Other people have questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your comments, questions?
Since I feel, okay, I believe that the applicant has worked diligently with us to meet our requests and concerns, and, you know, of course, these images here are not guaranteed about what they're going to look like, but we know that. We know those are possibilities. I'm happy to consider this project as something that would be good for North Garner.
Comments for Mr. Trezenberg?
We got some issues with the conditions that we're not going to iron out tonight. The fact that minimum commercial is in there, a maximum commercial and not minimum is in there, shows just how there are holes in these conditions. And Mr. Matthews says we want to be a cut above, but you don't do that by cutting everything down. And this project is close, but it's not there. And to Mr. Singleton's point, Mr. Vance and I took a tour, all council will be taking a tour of projects we've approved in the past several years. We've done that tour, Mr. Singleton went out to some, and if you don't know exactly what those conditions are and what that means for what that's going to look like, you're going to end up with some of the stuff you see out here that you all look, you all drive around and look at and say, how did that get approved? It's because the conditions aren't tight enough. We can't impose them, they can volunteer them, they just need to be volunteering better conditions. And we don't need to repeat some of the projects that we have approved, and we can control some of that. So we got to do that. On the affordable housing side, I'm all for it. I think their gesture to include it voluntarily is admirable. I think we got some work to do internally to decide if it's appropriate for our target and goals. We saw projects tonight, they're hitting sixty, thirty, you know, forty, thirty. Eighty percent, a hundred percent AMI Wake County is not workforce housing. So we got some work to do on that piece too. Those are my only comments right now. One more on open space, another thing that happened during the tour of looking at these projects. Depending on the topography, some of this stuff isn't actually usable open space. It ends up getting jammed up between houses. When you're looking at a site plan, it looks like a big open piece of land. You go out there and it's a thirty-degree angle into somebody's backyard. And I know the topography on this piece of property is very tricky, I assume it is, it is on Jürgen. So when you're talking about calculating that open space, we've got to look more carefully at the topography and usefulness of that open space to make sure it's counted, because there on the PUD, they're at twenty-five percent. Some of those things look really narrow, and I've noticed the way we develop or gets developed, some of those open spaces are really used as drainage ditches, draining property off of houses to get them into stormwater somewhere. It's not real open space in a usable sense. I have more comments, but I will leave it for now.
I have no questions for Mr. Trezenberg. Questions for the applicant?
Okay, thank you very much. Good observations, good comments from council. Mr. Trezenberg, I guess you get to sit down for a moment, and we'll ask the Applin and his applicant and representatives for a presentation from them. And likewise, sir, if you would, identify yourself, name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am Collier Marsh with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of the applicant. As you can see, come up to the front, we've got a number of members on our team that are here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. This is, of course, the park at Garner Station, and council is already very familiar with the site and the surrounding area. There's one aspect of this project I want to point out, it's something that the council knows, but the public may not be as aware of, which is the decision before the council tonight isn't a decision as to approve this project or keep the land exactly as it is. It's a decision on what is the zoning that will apply to the property. And a critical part of that inquiry is what is the zoning that applies today? The zoning that applies today for a large portion of this project is MFA. This project by right, without coming to council, could come in and develop over fourteen-hundred residential units, without any of the conditions that we've offered, without any of the improvements. These developers come in and proposing substantially less development, substantially less units, and a much better overall project. So just want to make that clear to the public that it's not a decision between preserving the land and approving a project. It's a decision between what's allowed on the property today, and I think by the end of this presentation, it should be pretty clear that what we're proposing is substantially better for the town than what's allowed today. Staff report pointed out that we are inconsistent with the 2018 comprehensive plan. We were caught between the timelines of the approval with the new plan that is in effect today, but because where we fell in the process was not applied to this project. But it's very relevant to consider this plan that was just approved in November of this year and how on point we are for what it calls for. The new plan calls for the neighborhood designation in the orange and a mixed-use area in the purple. Calls for mixture of housing types, calls for multifamily included with townhomes. It calls for commercial uses interspersed with your residential, and we are providing all of that. The plan also includes a section about how much growth and how much density you want to see in a project. Areas to transform, this is a level-four area to transform, which calls for three to five stories throughout the entire project. Surprisingly, as we heard from Mr. Trezenberg, arguably, the plan calls for something way more dense than what we're proposing. Instead, we're coming up with what we think is a good fit that checks all the boxes based on the input that we've heard. Other policies in the new plan talk about bringing some level of density to support your main street and your downtown. That's all in the new plan, and that's all provided with this project. There's also a transportation plan at play, and something that wasn't discussed at length in prior projects, but is worth, or prior presentations, but is worth repeating, that the town's transportation plan the town's transportation plan calls for a collector's street running straight through the middle of the new planned Jurgen Park, somehow connecting to the west onto Creech Road. Part of this project in early discussions, we agreed to take that off of the town's park and put it within our project and complete that critical connection as part of this proposal. So achieving an overall transportation plan goal that was not originally part of this site and wouldn't be included if the site was developed by right. This project has undergone as much public and stakeholder input as I'd venture to say any project in Garner has undergone. And we've listened to constituents, neighbors, council members, staff and address comments as best we can for the course of two years. And so this just shows some of the major touch points. And so again, for folks in the community that are interested in this project, I want you all to rest, be assured that we've gone through a arduous process to address concerns and have made a number of changes throughout the timeline of this project to address what we heard. This is what came in front of the council back in November. And so as council may recall, there's previous discussions about including baseball fields with the project. And the consensus coming out of that meeting was baseball fields might not be the best fit for the site. It may lead to some compromises for the project and for the town that are undesirable. The preference would be to work on the remainder of the project and come up with an overall better mixed use project for this part of town. So those were removed. And this slide just shows at a high level, the two plans. So again, what came to council back in November and what's being approved on the right-hand side. And you don't have to squint too hard to see just how different these projects are. May seem like similar uses, but they've been, this project's been transformed for the better based on all the feedback that we've heard. And we'll go through a lot of those details in just a moment, but at a high level, the big changes that were made since the last time this project was before council, going through the planning commission review process, we did remove those baseball fields. And doing so, we realigned the streets and the open spaces throughout the site and we really enhanced those. We took the extra acreage and used that to enhance the open spaces to create connectivity between open spaces, to create a more common theme of open space throughout the site and really make it more meaningful. We also diversified housing options throughout the project. So the multifamily area has been redesigned to accommodate different housing types, not just traditional apartments. So those building styles are adaptable. It's also organized in a manner that can lead to multiple different developments and then different architectural themes within them and then different building types depending on location within the community. There are extensive architectural commitments that accompany those. We also mixed up the townhomes, providing substantial variety. It was, it was pretty much one of the townhomes. Now you've got a mixture of product types, front, rear load, three story, two story, added two unit dwellings on the rear side, which are essentially patio homes with downstairs bedrooms so that they're usable for seniors. While doing all of this, we also removed 100 multifamily units. We heard concerns about density and so we did remove 100 of those units, shrinking the overall density of the project. That allowed us to expand the commercial area, hearing comments about the need for commercial in this area. To Mr. Dellenger's question about a minimum, the minimum commercial is dictated by the site. So we committed to a maximum to inform TIA assumptions because commercial is a higher driver of traffic and that was raised as a concern. That portion of the project is designated for commercial. So that is our minimum. The commercial is going to go there and nothing else is permitted there. To look at specific amounts of square footage, in, in my opinion at least, may limit some options if you have something with a larger outdoor space. So we look at that space as our commercial commitment. That's going to be delivered. The max is just to dictate our traffic, traffic analysis. So we know that you're not generating more trips. I talked about architectural commitments and we'll go through those in detail, but I would venture to say, I've done a number of projects in Garner, this has the most stringent architectural conditions of any project that's ever come in front of this town. I can say that with confidence. And then the last big change was an increase in the affordable housing commitment. This project came to council and we offered 2% of the units, the multifamily units as affordable units that was at the meeting. Since then, in further discussions, we've enhanced that commitment. The commitment is now 5% of the units and the term was increased from a 10-year affordable term to a 30-year affordable term. So even though we've shrunk the overall units, what it means is about 30, at full buildout, 30 affordable housing units would be provided at two different price points to ensure that we're providing a variety of housing options and these would be targeted and affordable to folks that are your, your police officers, your firefighters, your teachers. It's not to say that the non-restricted apartments couldn't be so affordable. In fact, I think that the way that the project's been designed actually provides a variety of different price points within that multifamily community. And then a variety of different price points within the for sale, the townhome community too as well by providing that product differentiation. So we've addressed it in a number of different ways, but the finer details are going to come from Robert Schunk, who is the mastermind behind the actual project layout.
Thank you, Collier. It's a tough act to follow. My name's Robert Schunk. As someone has told me, I'm the chief, chief community builder for Gander Development. And thank you, Jeff, for your, your presentation and all the details of what you went over with the changes and the tax commitments. My team and I have been working on this, this expansion of the downtown village for nearly, for over two years. We started putting pen to paper in February of 2021. And a tremendous amount of work has gone into the project, working with planning staff, town management, planning commission and all of you. A lot of, a lot of the planning of this development has also occurred with staff input well before the first council meeting. And then as all, as all of you know, since we first met in July of last year. So what I'm going to do is go through the individual areas of the plan and talk about it a little bit in more detail. So when we first submitted the plan, that plan is not shown here, but we had shown 10,000 square feet of commercial. We felt it was important not to compete with the existing downtown, but at several year urging, we increased the density or increased the intensity of the commercial to 20 and then at your, at your further urging, we increased it to 35,000 square feet. Mrs. Behringer, we, you can thank, we can thank you for encouraging us to provide the multi-use path up along Garner Road to New Ran Road. And at our further urging, we also committed to providing the pedestrian crossing signal so pedestrians can cross safely, more safely from New Ran Road across East Garner Road. This plan provides open space on the corner, open space areas in the, in the center and also provides views coming in, you know, to the project. And then from day one, at my suggestion, we also provided, to provide a 50-foot buffer along the existing residential that wraps further behind the multifamily units we're And let's just all look at this layout and imagine, you know, enjoying this public space. You know, whether it's between a soccer game or between your baseball games or during lunch, walking from the downtown businesses. This was the multifamily layout that we, on the left, that we showed as a result of the request of putting in baseball fields and reducing the, reducing the allowable area we had to do the multifamily. On the right, we have what we're proposing tonight and what we proposed at planning commission. Also here as well, we, we continue the 50-foot buffer, a voluntary buffer along those existing single family residential units. This layout has a tremendous more amount of open space, you know, interior here and these areas and these areas for pools, amenities, dog parks and other open space areas similar to that. The multifamily structures are flexible in nature in terms of the floor plan. The gentleman here with me, Jonathan Parsons, has done many multifamily developments. And if upon your request, he can speak to the flexibility of, of the floor plans that can be offered in these footprints. Also, one of the design commitments, one of the written design commitments allows for along this, along this street here and which can also wrap around this way, is activation of the street, okay? Which will allow for porches, front stoops and pedestrian entrances to the parkway and also to the public street that's here on the right-hand side of the screen. And also, you know, credit Mr. Vance, Mayor Proton Vance for urging us to provide more affordable housing, workforce housing, and we're going to provide the, you know, 30 units. Also in this image, you can see what is an extensive amount of trail network. The multi-use path trails are highlighted in pink. From day one, before, when we submitted the project, we were urged, we provided a connection to Garner Recreational Park up here on the top, running east and west across the project and then will connect to Jurgen Park. So there's an, there's an event at the Garner Recreational Park and there's enough parking your town residents can park at Jurgen Park and walk across or vice versa. And those are all publicly opened, they're all in the public right of way. And the other thing to highlight is there's a project in the air, nearby area we all want to not repeat. You know, one of the benefits of this community that we're providing is, is the transitions along the parkway. Okay? So we are providing a parkway that's going to connect Garner Road, East Garner Road to the south, up to Creech Road. And as you travel that road, you were, you will have transitions of the project. It's not going to be a monotonous road. So between the commercial and coming up to the residential, you have open space on the, on the, on the, on the east side of that parkway and you have the commercial. And then as you transition in, you then transition to the multifamily units with the townhomes across the street. And that, you know, that again, is a change into the dynamic nature of the street. Moving to the larger area of the single family detached section, the transition of the road continues. You know, it's not all one straight, narrow road, okay? Along here, what we've also proposed is a section and of where we'll have street trees along both sides of the, of the sidewalk and the greenway trail. And I have a section next that will further elaborate that, illustrate that. But again, the road continues to change. Here you have multifamily across from townhomes. Here in the lighter yellow, we're proposing two-story townhomes across from three-story townhomes. And then up here, you, you know, you have a different transition and then you exist, you exit out to Creech Road. So never at one point along this collector road for more than 500 feet, do you see the same thing. It's always changing and always transitioning, trying to avoid monotony. This also further shows the multi-use paths connecting Jurgen Park to East Garner Road or Garner Recreational Park. The areas in the middle, these active, active open space areas are roughly two and a half acres in space. We've made a commitment at the urging of the planning director's direction to encourage having front porches. So there's activation to create community. People can be on their front porches and throw a ball. And the intent is that, no, these are not going to be 30% slopes and to where these are usable open spaces. The one other benefit of removing the baseball fields from this project is, as many people know, there is a trail connection at the end of the parking lot at Garner Recreational, Garner Recreational Park. There's a trail from there that extends all along within the Garner Recreational Park property. So by removing the baseball fields, that trailhead remains preserved. That trailhead continues along the Garner Recreational Park and then will cross the parkway here to continue further north to the other maintained trails that we are preserving. So in my earlier comment, I talked about, you know, dual street trees. So the transportation plan calls for a, this to be called a collector's street. The collector's street in the, in the manual calls for a 75-foot right of way with 49 feet of pavement width and curbing gutter with bike lanes on either side. Knowing that we were looking to provide rear-loaded townhomes, you know, I, for example, you know, to be clarified, rear-loaded, the people that would come in, come to their homes would access garages from the rear of the home and the, the townhomes would front on the parkway. I could not imagine having a 75-foot right of way with 50-foot of pavement with three lanes of traffic in front of that unit. So I reached out to staff because we have, if going back a slide, because we have all these alleyways and limited opportunities for turning left and right on this project, it seemed prudent to reduce that section from 49 feet to 27 feet. One, it also reduces the burden on the town staff, town for further maintaining that, that roadway and also provides a much better feel. So on the left here, we have what is a 10-foot wide multi-use path on either side of the, and then on the right side is the five-foot sidewalk. Between there and the road, we have an eight-foot planting strip. Garner normally, their standard is a six-foot strip. So we widened that a little bit to give the trees, then the root zones more room for growth. And then in that curved section of the road, which I highlighted, you know, mentioned about here, I felt was important, let's, let's, let's throw a second row of street trees in again to further improve the transition of that road and avoid monotony. Moving to the northern part of the project, we're going to, we'll call this the preserve. And what we've modified, and this is at the urging of Mayor Gupta, was to provide housing for the older population that could live here. So the units that are, circle the, this area here are two-unit dwellings that would be, we would consider a patio home. And then as you can see up top here, these are all of the existing trails that we are preserving. There's a section of trail here that doesn't exist that we want to create to improve that So we've worked extensively. And as you heard Collier say, you know, we could do about 1,400 units by right here. At the very beginning of this project, we felt it was appropriate to re, to rezone it. We had support from the very beginning with town staff about this was the right thing to do to bring it all into one zoning, because we felt the importance of providing additional conditions, knowing of what was being proposed with the large investment that the town is proposing with Jurgen Park would exist over on Garner Recreational Park. And this just provides a more cohesively, well-planned out community and neighborhood. This is the overall vehicular and pedestrian network. There are 1.43 miles of 10-foot wide pedestrian trails on this plan. There are 2.7 miles of public sidewalks. That is not including the, the private sidewalks that'll be in the multifamily area. And on our property, and you can see all of the trails that we're doing, we show here and maintain and we're adding to, that's one mile of natural trails. That does not include the off-site trails connecting Garner, Garner Recreational Park or on Garner Recreational Park. This is the area of the open space. Calculated it yesterday, between the 50-foot buffers, 25-foot perimeter buffers, the area is outside, outside of where storm ponds and open space would be, would be approximately 20 acres of preserved woodlands. We don't want to clear any more trees than we have to. That, that would be senseless to do. You know, keeping the tree, keeping as many trees as we can adds value. The area, you know, the two large areas and the townhomes here, again, about two and a half to 2.7 acres from, you know, the front facade of each unit. As Mr. Treisenberg went over, we also provided a greater enhanced single family architectural conditions that he went through thoroughly. We added the 5% affordable housing for over 30 years, as Collier suggested. And these are the representative images that when you read the architectural commitments, you can see some of the written conditions that meet, that demonstrate what's in here in these pictures. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryneal Stevenson with DRMP to talk about traffic.
Thanks, Robert. Ryneal Stevenson with, with DRMP. I know, and you heard from Mr. Treisenberg's presentation, there's been a lot of discussion about traffic on this project. And we've looked at the traffic and various land uses as the site plan has evolved, we've evolved the traffic. As the site plan has evolved, we've evolved the traffic study, you know, as well to make sure we have traffic covered. So the, we've done a traffic, traffic impact analysis report. We've done an addendum to look at the change in the density. And you can see here, the one thing I want to point out is that the traffic with this updated plan and land uses that, that we've heard about, the traffic is essentially the same as has been looked at in the, in the traffic study and the addendum. And there are a number of road improvements that are associated with that, and those would remain the same. The, again, a couple of iterations here, I'll, I'll kind of cover this kind of quickly, and if there's questions, we can come back to it. But what we've looked at here is the intersections in the, in the study area along Garner Road and Creech Road. And we can see that the levels of service at those intersections are meeting the acceptable level of service standards with the, with road improvements that are proposed and will be completed as part of the project. And we can talk about those in more detail if we, if we need to, if there's questions. This table is kind of more level of service kind of results for intersections, for the various analysis scenarios that we completed. Just want to point out, the one that's highlighted there in yellow is just to point out that the level of service did decrease from a C to a D, but its level of service D is typically considered acceptable. And that's just a, an increase in overall delay at the intersection that pushed it over from C to D. But again, the levels of service are acceptable with the improvements that are going to be done with the project.
Just a question for public. C, B is better than C. C is better than D, so D is bad.
D is acceptable. There is capacity, capacity at the intersection.
What are some other examples, this may be a staff question, of D-level service intersections in Garner right now?
The chart shows current D-level at East Garner and Jones Sausage Road.
I can say this, there are, there are many intersections in Garner that operate at level service D, there are many that operate at worse than D. I mean, there, there are a lot of them around town. So, you know, this is, and I'm, I'm not up here to tell you that there's no traffic out here and everything works, you know, beautifully. I think if it did, we wouldn't need to make road improvements at these intersections. But we are committed to making road improvements at these intersections that will improve the way those intersections operate. And so that's, that's why you have the level service D there. But level service D, the way to think about it is, level service D is telling you that there is capacity at the intersection, but you are getting near that capacity, but you're, you still have capacity at the intersection. And this is with the improvements that we, that we're making, so.
There would be other growth occurring and projects approved between 2022 and 2029 and built out, and the road improvements necessary to increase the capacity of East Garner Road and Creech Road are not going to happen.
Well, the, one thing that this table, and I probably shouldn't have mentioned this when I got on the slide, but one thing, this table is looking at the traffic from those other developments. So that's adding that traffic in, and then looking at the improvements that we have to make.
There are other projects that haven't come to us yet, so there's.
Correct. And that's when what they'll do, they'll have to do their study and, and.
We have to be cognizant of that, because the calculation right now is, we have enough, we've approved and have enough units in the pipeline to put us at 65,000 or 70,000 residents by 2030. And that, and I say that because we've over-approved around South Garner High School, where we're not, we're not going to have sufficient infrastructure improvements. And this, a similar thing is happening in North Garner. So I think we've, it sort of plays out what the dangers or the risks are, dangers, it can be dangerous. That's why we're doing some of these improvements at Bryan Road. So I just put it into context, it's, these aren't, those aren't the only projects. And, and so we have to be hyper-aware of using that road resource.
Yeah, and that's, and that's a good point. And there's, you know, our study accounts for that in some way by saying, we take traffic at a snapshot of existing, you know, time, and then we project that up, we grow that up to a future year here, in this case, 2029. And we're adding in these other developments that we do know about. And so there's, you know, we are accounting for some of that unknown growth that, that may occur here. But this, this table is looking at the future with the developments that we know about that are not built now. And again, we are building improvements that will help to accommodate that traffic as well.
An observation, first, there's going to be with this project, if it's approved, there will be a stoplight at New Rand Road. That's not reflected here, and that will be tremendously helpful. And I have a question for the audience, well, for the audience's information. How long will the build-out for the entire project be?
When we started the project, when the TIO was originally done two years ago, we showed a build-out of 2029. I would expect it would be, you know, several years later, definitely with the residential, and even more so with the commercial. And then one clarification is that, and Ryneal, if we're correct with this table, this table does not take into account the relief that the parkway through the project, how that would also alleviate the traffic at that intersection.
I asked that question just to note that all of the traffic, increased traffic is not going to happen at one time or not in the next three or four years. It's going to be quite a while. And there may be more road improvements that are involved between now and the total build-out.
Yeah, I think that's a good point also. And what, what Robert was mentioning is that when we build the parkway, which is the connection that's on the transportation plan, to provide a connection between Garner Road and Creech Road, yeah, I can't really overstate how important that is to not, not just this development, but for the area. I mean, it is another connection from Creech Road to Garner Road. And so that allows and can allow folks to sort of bypass the Creech Road-Garner intersection, you know, during heavy times. That's what it's there for. That's why it's shown in the transportation plan, is to provide relief to the surrounding intersections. And there is a good point that more development may be coming. And I think there's, there's a, there's a big, and forgive me, but I think the mayor said it earlier, there's a big opportunity here for transportation. I was pretty excited to actually see all this development happening in this area, because there are a lot of these improvements that are identified in the transportation plan that have a chance to be done, or mostly done, as part of these developments. And, you know, I just want to point out that the, that the transportation plan is, it looks at the future, the future needs for the town and how to move people around town. And not all of that happens overnight. I mean, if we tried to look at that and said the town has to build all these improvements, it may never get done. But this is, this is an opportunity to get, to get some of these improvements in place that will help, help this area.
I'd like to just make one more point, and that is that we have been given some unexpected funds for improvements at Jones Sausage Road and Garner Road. And some of the traffic that's leaving this project, should it be built, will be going left down to Jones Sausage Road, not coming back toward Creech Road. So that's another thing to take into consideration.
That is correct. And we're anticipating making improvements at Jones Sausage and Garner, you know, as well, so. But this, those, the intersections are important. Traffic, traffic bottlenecks or slows at intersections. If there's nothing to stop them, you know, along the road, you can have a lot more cars on a roadway, but when they have to stop is where the congestion happens. So the intersections are really important to make improvements, to preserve the life of these roadways into the future. And that's what we're seeing here, and what we're charged to do with these road improvements that we're making.
Let's take a timeout here. Good God.
Speaking of timeout, maybe we'll take a 10-minute break after this question.
This won't be a thought, a question, it'll be a thought. It'll be a fact. Cut through from Creech Road to Garner, it sounds great. A future city council will be up here saying, the residents live, and they'll be raising all kinds of heck for the cut-through traffic at Speed and 45th and the 25th. Secondly, the improvements in New Rand Road are great. The problem is, when you leave this, and the traffic counts are 68-42, if I recall, about 1,000 will go on Creech Road and the other 5,800 will go on Garner Road. If they're going to work in the morning, many of them are going to turn left. So the improvements in New Rand Road aren't going to help them. They're going to turn left. If you're cutting through, they're going to turn left. I come up Creech Road all the time, and sometimes it's backed up 20 cars, and the Creech Road intersection is hard, because it can't get any wider, because of the historic property, you know all this. So it sounds great, and it's a cut-through, and guess what? It's going to be a cut-through, and next thing you know, we're going to be putting, one day, someone will be required to put a traffic comment out there, because they're cutting through so much. So just remember, the improvements in New Rand Road are great, but when people leave in the morning, they get on 40, they're not going to turn right, they're going to turn left. And so, again, according to the traffic count you gave us, 68-42, about 1,000 on Creech Road. 5,800, 5,700, whatever, on Garner Road, which is currently 11,500. Traffic will increase from this one project on Garner Road by 50%. And we know how hard and expensive it is to build roads, because we had planned to improve Jones Sausage on both sides, you know all about that, but we're not able to because of increased cost and right-of-way acquisition and so forth and so on. So part of the Jones Sausage will be improved, if, as it moves forward, hopefully. So the Creech Road connection is, sounds great, but again, you're setting up a future town council for the cut-through, they'll be putting, having a neighborhood meeting up here with traffic calming, and there'll be no signal at Garner Road and the main entrance here for the left turn. And the left turn there in the morning is going to be a challenge, because people are driving down Garner Road. The stoplight will help, because it'll cause the brake. That'll be the one great, that'll cause, create a brake for people to get out. But in the afternoon, it's, it'll be, it's going to be tough, so. And yes, it is, it is the 8 o'clock time for a break.
Mr. Behringer finished what you were saying.
Are you talking about the improvements at Jones Sausage Road and left turns coming out? Okay, the, the connection onto Garner, East Garner Road from this property. Some of those, some of that traffic will turn left and go down to the intersection at Jones Sausage and East Garner Road to get out, to get to 40. And we know that improvements are coming for that intersection at Jones Sausage Road, some that we didn't expect, because some money came from, I believe, Campo, that was unexpected. And then that's going to be an improvement that we weren't counting on.
These are important questions, they deserve our full attention. I'm going to, I just had a second to my motion of taking a 10-minute break. So if you could, I'd be out and be back in 10 minutes, which is about 13 after the hour, if you would. So we'll move quickly and get back, this is important stuff. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, and our regular, our regular council, a regular council meeting will resume. If everyone can find their seat, please. If everyone can find their seat, we'll get back in order. Yes, sir. Find a seat, and we'll pick up where we left off. And I was talking about traffic, and everybody hates traffic, and everybody wants a solution. And here's the guy who's going to bring it to us, right? Okay, so if you can pick up, I think we had answered the immediate questions, our comments Ms. Behringer had. Mr. Singleton, I think, finished, finished his comment. So we're back to you for the wrap-up.
If, if there's additional questions, just feel free to interrupt. But this is what I wanted to kind of go through a little bit, which we've already kind of talked about, is just the improvements that are, that we're going to be making as part of the project. We've heard about the signal, the new traffic signal at, at East Garner and Rand Road. That will be a tremendous help. And although, although it is not as immediately helpful for this site, it does help the traffic that's out there, and it will provide some benefit to the site. But we, we think it's a reasonable improvement that, to be made there. In addition to the signal, there's improvements at, at Rand Road, it'll stay on that intersection, which is to extend the left turn lane. And we also heard about constructing the right turn lane, which is no small feat, given that it's in the railroad right-of-way. So additional turn lane improvements, the signals there would be, would be a major help for that intersection. We've talked about East Garner and Jones Sausage as well, but we are, will be required to contribute towards this, this right turn lane at the intersection. And again, the, the eastbound side of East Garner is the heaviest part of that intersection in the afternoon, so this, this, this will be a big help for that intersection. We also talked a little bit about the parkway and East Garner Road. And again, we'll be constructing the parkway, a couple lanes, it'll be a stop sign intersection, and there'll be turn lanes as well along East Garner Road at the parkway intersection. And then we, Creech Road, again, the, the other part of the parkway connection at Creech Road, there'll be stop sign there and turn lanes as well on Creech Road and the parkway coming out. So a number of road improvements in the area. This, this slide here just is a quick illustration of what the signal and improvements at Rand Road will, will do there. So you can see the image on the left is the stacking that occurs, and in red, and you can see it stacks back to 70, as an unsignalized intersection without the improvements. With the traffic signal on the right, the blue line is a little less than half of that stacking. So it's a, it's a big, big improvement there to allow vehicles to pass through the, through the intersection. So just one example of the, the benefits of the improvements that'll be made. The, again, just, this is just an, just an illustration of the connectivity to Creech Road there, just illustrates the widening. It's a little bit difficult to see, because it's in gray, but it illustrates the connection there and the widening that would occur for that intersection. And I can turn it back over to Collier, unless there's any additional questions or things to address at this time.
Hearing no questions, we're glad to hear from Collier.
As this council news, I could go on at length, but I think we've covered the high points of this project. The other phase, obviously, would be the development agreement, which I think is a secondary hearing, so we can put a tack in the presentation for now and address that in the order that the council sees fit.
Okay, thank you. And while you're up, I'll, I'll ask the council, council members, do we have some specific questions for the applicant at this point? I'll start down here.
Yes, I would just say that this is a large transformative project that's being proposed, no doubt about it. It's being placed in a key area in the town of Garner, that's realized, area that is sensitive and for a number of different reasons. The project process has gone through a number of iterations and revisions throughout, and that's greatly appreciated, that the, that you, that the team was willing to make those revisions and consider them. And the density has been reduced since the first time it came before us, from about 100 units. The architectural is, is still a concern, as, as to what, what had come out there. The affordable housing piece, again, it's groundbreaking when it comes to, not groundbreaking, but it's nuanced when it comes to Garner, with the affordable housing being a part of the development process and going through that process of providing 5% of the total housing for 30 years, that, that, and that my mind is appreciated. Also with the reserve, reserving of the multi-use path, that was consideration that folks currently use, and they love to use it, and that's being enhanced and maintained as it is in its current, current state. And the housing for older populations, followed by the road improvements and things that have been noted are, are, are good. And I would say that with that, the concern I have pertains to the conditions and how those conditions. are, are, are good. Uh, and I would say that, uh, with that, the concern I have pertains to, uh, the conditions and how those conditions are being interpreted. Really, that's where, that's where I am and, and understanding, understanding, make sure that, that the product that goes, uh, possibly goes on the ground i- is going to be not something that is not going to reflect positively, possibly, on Garner. So there needs to be more, uh, discussion on that, in my mind, to really bring that out and, and, and solidify. Solidify that this is, it will not be less than this, or if you can't do that, then we have, we, we have to rethink this, this process as to, as to approval or denial. Okay? Uh, but overall, I appreciate what you've done thus far, the team has done thus far, but, but I just have that consideration in reference to the proposed conditions and getting, and getting an understanding as to what that means.
Appreciate the commentary. On, on the architectural side of things, um, what I'll offer is a couple of things. One, we've got experts that can answer specific questions. Um, as far as the standard for the architectural commitments, the way that those have come about, we essentially took every project that we could reference in Garner and threw in the conditions. This was important here, this was important here, and added them up. As the process went on, we learned about a new commitment and we added them on. So we've tried to take the best of every project and put it into this one. Um, as I think Councilmember Dellinger articulated at the, um, during the staff presentation, architectural conditions are voluntary. Um, but we've been all ears throughout the process. So we've been paying attention to what's important to the town and what the issues are that you've seen with other projects and how can they be addressed? And so when we hear a specific architectural concern, it's been added. Uh, so, so the list is robust and, um, as again, I think Councilmember Dellinger pointed out, uh, or no, maybe it was Councilmember Singleton, pictures are representative. The written conditions are what matters here. And then we've been trying to say that all along. That's where the rubber hits the road. And we've tried to give the council the strongest architectural commitments of any project. So to the extent they're coming up short in any area, we're all ears. We, we've gone to the back room before and drafted conditions. If there's something that's coming up short here, we want to hear it. We're willing to consider it. I think as we've demonstrated to this council, we've made any number of conditions. If it's been brought up, this team's always willing to look at it and see what can be done. But the other layer to all of it that I think goes to the concerns that we've been hearing about other projects is how the site actually lays out. And so we talk about a project that might be a little east of this one and how that one had laid out and how when you're in that neighborhood, the presence is not what you want to see. It's linear, everything's uniform, it's monotonous. And so that was one of the big changes between the last meeting and this meeting was to start to create the variety within the community, the difference in product types. So there's now conditions requiring multiple different heights and mixture of units. Um, but also the layout and how those all interact with each other to create unique sections and unique transitions. So we've tried to not only have the most robust architectural conditions, but actually get to the site plan level of detail where you can see how it actually feels different. Say all this, I encourage you to ask questions of our experts that can tell you how it all works because I am no expert in architecture. I just look at lists and say, this is the longest one I've seen.
Thank you, Collier, for the frankness. Right, this, as we mentioned earlier, this is a complex project. Many moving parts, extremely important. Thank you.
I'll give you that.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Vance. Uh, Mr. Dellinger, have some questions or comments?
I think you kind of answered the question in the, it, just because it's the longest doesn't mean it's the best. And I think that's sort of, that you've referenced a shotgun approach of, we'll take this over here, we'll take this from over here, we'll do this over here. I think the challenge for us is to be able to translate those conditions into what's on the ground. And that's work we have to do because we can't say, "Soffit what?" I don't know. You know, overhang, what does it look like? And I think that's homework we have to do to be sure, because I think we've had conditions brought for, to us before and renderings, and we've said, "Yeah, that looks good." And then they start building and it's like, "That is terrible." And I don't think that we're, I don't feel I'm at a place where I can say, "I'm reading through these conditions and I've got a pretty good idea what that's going to look like." So that gives me, uh, a lot of reservations right now because we want what you build to be the best. I know that's your expectation, that's your plan. We want to help you do it. We want to help you get those conditions right. The other thing I think we, giving me pause is the workforce housing element too. I think it is ground, to Mr. Vance's point, it is groundbreaking to offer it up. Um, and the percentage is, is, is good and the term is good. But I think we have to have a little bit more internal conversation on, is it meeting what our consensus needs are in definition of workforce housing? We haven't done all of that work for a large policy, but I think we can concentrate our efforts in a short period of time to create, uh, something that works. Um, I think we're also very aware that you've been in the process a long time. I think Millers Creek back there would argue that they're probably the winner. I think they came to us in August of 2021, which means they were in the pipeline much longer than that. So we're sympathetic to the duration of time and we would definitely have a sense of urgency around these issues, but we want to get it right and not have a commitment that doesn't meet our, our needs. I have a few more. Those aren't questions, those are comments. So save your, save your breath for someone else's question. Um, and I've got a couple of consistency and the one other that I'll put out there right now is I do have some concerns on, ongoing from three-story to two-story townhomes. And the main reason that is a fiscal sustainability consideration for the town. The two-story townhomes that Pulte's done on the other side of what's going to be Jürgen Park, those tax values came in at a revale at around 350. Um, some at Oak Park came in around the same amount. When you start decreasing the size and the square footage, you're decreasing, uh, that net revenue, potential net revenue gain for the town because you're building a smaller product. And again, if you do the conditions right and you have good, better materials, you maybe you can elevate it up. But that does give me concerns because the one consistent thing to this project has been 350 townhomes. Now we're doing some single-family, which again, if they're done properly, can still be higher value. I'm still not convinced that townhomes and the multifamily is the best use of, of land. That's a whole other conversation. But those are kind of my highlight concerns at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Dellinger. Thank you very much.
I wasn't a question.
Just briefly on the affordable side, if I, if I may, just because I, I think that your two comment, your last two comments in capture the challenge of this project, which is that we're kind of in, caught between the crossfire with conflicting desires and requests. So like the three-story to two-story was at the request to have housing variety. But two things I heard from you that kind of put us on the opposite end of the spectrums is the desire to provide affordable housing and then concerns that certain product types are going to be of a lower cost. But that's in fact, the intent with some of these mixtures of product types is we're going to have rental units that are rented at affordable rates. These are not subsidized. So I, I heard earlier discussions about 30% AMI, 60% AMI. There's no special financing, government subsidies or anything for this project. This is coming out of the developer's pocket to reduce rates below what they actually cost. Um, so that's one component of it, but you can achieve affordable, for-sale townhome product by providing smaller units and greater variety, multiple price points within it. So I, I hear what you're saying and I understand from a tax base, that's one end of the spectrum, but we're also trying to balance all the other things. And so in, in my estimation, we're trying to strike a balance. We're not going to be perfect on everything, but I think that it strikes a good balance here.
I must, I must rebut it since you wanted to intervene. The calculation of what's affordable in workforce housing is something that we have to define. If we have the definition of, of teacher, fire, police, town, city employees, we have to find the right AMI for that. And that's going to be our challenge to do that. And there's no smaller units being built in Garner right now. I don't care how small you're making them, that are going to be available for first-time homebuyers. And that's just a reality. And we're not, and we're only talking about the multifamily here. So the townhome, I get some variety, I get that, that's good. But on the affordability side, um, for the standards, that's something we need to work out that meets our expectations because 80%. Again, that becomes a moving target over time as well. And I know just from what we pay our employees here, it, it doesn't hit the mark. So we have to do, and we'll, we can be quick about it. We'll put our heads together. Um, that's my comment on it.
Comments? And we'll kind of run through and give everybody a chance to ask a question or two and then see where we are.
I don't have any questions at this point. I just would like to say that, you know, for the past four years, we've gone through unprecedented speed, lightning speed changes. And I appreciate your willingness, your team's willingness to work with us and continually answer our questions that we didn't know we had when we started. So thanks a lot.
Good observation. Mr. Singleton, another comment or two?
I have the concern on the, the affordable housing unit and, you know, they call it groundbreaking, I'm sorry. It's 3.5, 4% of 950 units. That's, be honest here. We're just, just hitting a few. With 80% and 100%, it should be 60% and 80%, or somewhere in that neighborhood. The previous project had 83% at 54% of AMI and 100% at 60%. So if you're going to have an impact, uh, with the area median income, let's have an impact. I know there's no subsidy and that's fine. I know how you make it, you raise the other rent. This is not brain surgery, you know, this, this happens all the time. So the rent will be made up. That's not a problem. I, the people in the audience, the citizens in the audience, stand up if you hear in concern with this project. If you, here you have a concern with this project, please stand up. Most, most are many of the people that are here. So that, that lets us know something and I don't think you can see any of them speak out in favor of it. So thank you for being here. Sorry it's not a public hearing, but it's the impact because these people live in North Garner. And I know about North Garner because I lived there for 12 years. I lived right beside, uh, North Garner Middle School for 12 years, 703 Bryan Street. You can check it out.
It's for 30 years, okay?
And still there.
Still there.
It's important to all of us.
So, um, again, it's the density and the traffic, that the impact. I mean, if we're going to put 1,000 cars on Creech Road here and the other ones down there, I calculated by, by, based off the numbers from y'all's traffic counts, that will be enough, if, if they all got approved, that may never happen. But if they did, that would be another thousand. It might be 2,000 cars on Creech Road, which has about 4,400 a day, so it would increase that by 50% too. So this is a huge part that if this is allowed to go into Creech Road, what about the other projects? We're going to say no to all of them? And another concern, I had several people contact me about whether this road is going through, it's going through the park. The park was not, not planned to be changed like this and there are a lot of concern about that. And Mr. Whitfield, who was a longtime parking rec director here, has had concern about that. And I'll restate his concern. It's a concern that you're going through the park and we're going to ask for something that may or may not happen. I'm assuming it's going to happen because we wouldn't have started this process. But the, the concern in the afternoon, the traffic for the carpool will sometime back up to where that road's going to be. That's a concern. Um, and we had that at other schools. This is not the first one that's going to happen. It won't be the last, but that's a concern with additional traffic going there because you have to remember there are three schools around this project. The two elementary schools and the middle school. And so that, the, the, the peak hours with the schools are different because the elementary school will start later. So the bus traffic and, and the carpool traffic is a lot and this will only add to it. I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you. Good, good observations. Mr. Matthews, observations, questions?
I'll, I'll try to kind of round this whole thing out. I've heard everybody up here and everybody's got concerns and the audience has concerns. But one thing, we're going, in Garner, we're growing whether we like it or not. It's coming whether we like it or not, whether I like it or not, they're coming. And so much of our traffic is coming from Southway, Johnson County, Harnett County, passing through Garner. A lot of our traffic issues is not Garner, it's everybody else coming through, going to Raleigh, going to work, whatever, wherever they're going. And you go out on 5401 on stage and see it every, every morning and afternoon. And, uh, it is what it is, a reality. So traffic's a reality and it's going to be here and it's probably going to get a whole lot worse. I hate to be a bearer of bad news, you know, DOT can give us a little bit of money. We need a lot of money to get these roads right. And it's a DOT issue, you know, we can wish all we want. Regarding this project, uh, personally, I like the project. I think it's, it's the way we're going in today's time. You can ride around Wake County and go to other places. You can see bad projects, you see really nice ones. And, uh, and I, I believe in my heart, when this thing is over with, this is going to be a very nice project. Have we got all the details worked out? Probably not, but I'm counting on this project here to set a standard for Garner. And a good standard, and I think everybody on this board wants that. So it'll be something we'll be proud of and somebody comes, "Oh, to build something." We'll go ahead and look at what they did. This is good company you'll ever get from me. Go look at what they did and that's where you start at. That's where the bar is, you know? So, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, whatever we do here, that we can resolve this thing one way or the other or, or get close to where we need to be and wind up having a good project here that we'll all be proud of because some things we can change, some things we can't. Is it going to be perfect? No. But if we can kick it up here, then the next project, we can kick it up a little bit more and work our way up to the top because we're going to work through this thing. This is all new to us, whether we want to admit it or not, all this growth and, uh, and Raleigh's got their own problems. But of course, after Raleigh, I couldn't care less what Raleigh does. I'm concerned about Garner and let Raleigh follow us. So.
Let us lead the way.
And that's just my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Excellent observations. We, we want to be above average. We want just to be the new standard that we work toward. Uh, are there issues? Certainly there are. Uh, what I'm sensing particularly from the first two gentlemen down here, uh, is that the, the sensitivity to the time that you guys have invested here. And, and the patience you've worked through, your ability to adapt and incorporate, uh, suggestions. In fact, it may be, you may have made those, uh, improvements or changes faster than we can even assimilate them. It's secondhand language to you guys to look at zoning conditions and these affordable housing things. We haven't picked up that skillset yet. It takes us a little longer. And what I thought I was hearing perhaps, uh, at least from a couple of guys down here, is that we're, we're close. We like this. No reflection on how fast you've adopted, adopted the changes, but how quickly we, we have not internalized or understood those. It, uh, we don't want to take out further. I, I think I'll just pass back to Mr. Vance for any closing comments or suggestions.
Uh, well, uh, what I would, what I would recommend is, is that, uh, that this particular zoning is allowed a little bit more time for a review of, of items, one of workforce, workforce housing and also in looking at the, uh, the proposed conditions for clarity, uh, with the town staff and designated individuals. If that is me placed in a motion, when it's, when it's right time, I can do that as well.
Mr. Mayor, we're going to put a timeline on this.
Well, uh, I, I think Mr. Vance was about to make a motion, uh, and that would be appropriate. Do you want to make a motion, Mr. Vance?
I, I sure can. Is it appropriate to do so? Okay, I can make a motion. Okay. I move that CZDP PD 2204 be continued and placed on the April 2nd, 2024 regular meeting session after the applicant has reviewed workforce housing and proposed conditions for clarity with town staff and designated citizens.
So there's, there are motion made. Excuse me, excuse, excuse, excuse me, excuse me. Let me, let me restate this motion. Uh, there's been a motion made, uh, to continue this case until the next regular town meeting, which will be, uh, April the 2nd. There's a motion been made. Is there a second to this motion?
Thank you.
It's been made by Mr. Vance, seconded by Mr. Dellinger. Uh, is there, and do we need further discussion on this motion?
I would suggest you move it to April 16th. We're sitting here saying, "We can't solve, figure all this stuff out and we're going to do it in two weeks and we have another agenda meeting next week, another meeting next week." So I would suggest you move to the second meeting in April, which is April 16th. That's four weeks more time to think and assimilate and figure out. I mean, if we can't figure it out now, we've had it before. What's going to be two weeks? I would, I would suggest we go to the second meeting in April. That's just great.
We have, we have a, a motion and a second, uh, for, for April the 2nd, uh, continuing to April the 2nd. We have some discussion. Mr. Matthews, you have some discussion?
Yes, sir. I just want to make a comment. If we, if we move this to the April 2nd and, and I'm, and I'm fine with that. But at that meeting, I would like to spring some closure on this thing. We, we beat this thing to death for two years and these people, the citizens need to know and the people putting forth effort need to know. And when we get, if we do it April 2nd, let's come in here prepared to do what we need to do and make sure we got everything ready. We got to, to, to make a decision on this thing. I, I would like to see that happen.
Let's clarify. We had not debated this for two years. We had debated this for less than a year. Let's get that clear. Just because they were here for two years doesn't mean that. We picked it up in the spring because we met with them in the summer about the ball fields. So let's get it clear. They have not been before us for two years. They've been with staff for two years. Let's get it clear and get the facts right. It's like, you know, the next project in front of us started three years ago. Heck, you and I were in the council when we kept bumping the project on for 401, remember? It was about seven or eight years, remember? We approved it in two-year increments and kept bumping it out. So, you know, let's get it, get it clear. This has not been before us for two years. It's been before us for less than a year.
And to Mr.
All important observations.
Oh, I mean, it, we're in a motion and a second, and so we're debating. We can't commit to what we're going to do on April 2nd. So we're not going to make that commitment. We're going to move it to that meeting. And if we can get done the things we need to get done by that meeting and we can bring it to closure, then maybe we will. If we can't, we won't. And it takes as long as it takes to get it right. Uh, I'm of a different opinion on getting into the details. Because the details matter on a project that's the second largest project Garner's ever seen. They matter. We don't have the luxury on, to redo this project again. We can't come back and say, "Well, we should have done that better." We've had four or five years of looking at projects and doing better. Now's the time to evaluate where we've not inked in the details Now's the time to evaluate where we've not inked in the details and make sure we get this huge, big, important project as good as we can and be, and really be proud of it. And no going out, because I, I, I'm a reader, I read details. I can't read these conditions and know what's going to come out on the other end. I just know I've driven around for four hours last week, going to three different, three dozen different projects and saw a bunch of stuff that was terrible. And if we can sit here and be guaranteed that this is not going to be terrible architecturally, then we'll vote. But I, I don't think we can. And that's just my, I, I, I know I can't. I can't read those conditions that way. And they're new conditions. They've changed and evolved. We've had these, I've seen these new conditions first time a few days ago. Because they've changed and changed and changed and changed. You got to assimilate this stuff. You got to process it to ma, to make that solid, firm decision. Some of us more comfortable with not getting there. Um, but I think we owe it to all those people out here who put us up here to do that work. If you don't want us to do that level of detail, raise your hand. If you don't want us to do that level of detail work, say you don't want us to? If, if you don't want us to do that level of detail and due diligence on this project, please raise your hand. Right.
Mr. Morris, we're this up halfway.
Can I? Getting paid.
Okay, uh, we've, we've called, there's a motion, uh, that we continue this discussion, uh, on this case until the next regularly scheduled town council meeting, which will be April the second. We'll do our best to address the other details and see if they are surmountable, uh, in that time. And then when it comes before the council again, uh, we, we will do our very best, uh, to, to make a, a final decision. This is going on.
I can live with that, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion and a second. Okay, there's a motion and a second and one, and one more comment from Mr. Matthews. But what I'm going to do now is call for a voice vote on the motion that's before us, which is to continue this until April the second. It was made, made and seconded down here. I'll start here to take a vote. Mr. Matthews, aye or nay?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
Nay.
Miss Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Dellinger?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Aye.
Okay, it appears, uh, that that motion to continue this till the April second meeting passes four to one. Uh, so that will conclude, uh, this discussion here this evening. And again, I can all, only reiterate, this is complex, it's important, it's one of the biggest things we've ever done. It's one of the most important things in our lifetime.
A question for the record, because we didn't get to it in this conversation, it's for Jeff, I think. What's, because the project had gone to Parks and Rec and they had evaluated the ball fields and now that's gone, what's the status of the fee in lieu on this project?
Um, so at this point, it, to my knowledge, it would be full fee in lieu without any dedication of parkland.
That's the applicant's, just higher.
I believe so.
I think that's consistent with the recommendation was that the fee in lieu and the alternate would have been okay. Yeah, but we're not seeking any reimbursements or credits, we would just be obligated to pay.
That's what, that's what I was trying to clarify, because the ball fields mull, muddled things up. So the applicant's request is for full fee in lieu. Because I didn't see that.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page. Okay, thank you.
Good, well, a goo, good question, that's important. Uh, it's a little obscure for some of you, but it's very important. And we'll come up later with, with a more detailed estimate of what that actual fee is. Hard to tell now.
Can you explain what the fee in lieu is so that people here know what that is?
Yes, um, so the, the ordinance requires, um, there's a section of regulations that deal with parkland, uh, dedication. And the applicant, when they come in, um, can request whether or not they want to dedicate the land and there's a calculation for that, um, based on the number of dwelling units. And if the other option is to pay a fee in lieu of that dedication and there's another calculation for that as well. Um, so that's how that works and it can be all of one or the other and it could also be a combination.
And it, it's council's determination as to which one to implement. They can have their preference, but we can make a determination on that, correct?
Uh, was there closing comments you wanted to make, Mr. Morris?
Uh, no further comments. Uh, we appreciate all the consideration. Um, obviously, we're, we're eager to move forward, but we want to make sure we get this right. Uh, our team's ready, willing and able to meet tomorrow, tonight, at any point. Um, so we look forward to hearing from staff and from council and anything we need to do to address the comments.
Yeah, I think it goes without saying that you all have been over backwards to accommodate every request, uh, answer every question, make yourself available. Uh, no question, you guys have been, uh, above average on, on your openness and willingness to work with. So thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to move to item number two and ask, uh, which is the, the, uh, development agreement that goes handed down. Do we need to make a motion and make a similar decision on that particular item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, given that the development agreement is contingent upon approval of the plan, I would recommend that you continue, um, this matter to the April second meeting as well.
Okay, is there such a motion? Is, is there a second? Miss Behringer, uh, seconded, I think we can do, oh, excuse me.
It may help, just in the interest of, of efficiency, um, to, to cover some of the details if possible, but, but certainly up to the council. Um, but I think it does address some of the comments that we had just heard.
Okay, uh, say that again, please.
Yeah, my apologies. Um, so if it's possible, just, I don't think the development agreement would take long and if we have the ability to narrow the issues between now and then, I'd, I'd love to have any possible discussion on it now so that if, if there was some issue that we didn't foresee, just to make sure we can address that between now and next meeting.
Council's prerogative, I can.
That's a reasonable request.
You mean, you're, you're, you're suggesting, Mr. Morris, that, and, and I'm, I'm looking for reinterpretation from our attorney and from our senior member here, uh, you're suggesting that we go ahead and approve the, uh, development agreement?
Uh, just to, just to speak about it and make sure that we get all the issues out there and then, and then continue it after we have the opportunity, just to cover the latest iteration.
If we have a specific question or questions, they can, they'll know about it before the next meeting. Instead of coming the next week and then we raise, they go, oh, we got another meeting.
So, so let me ask the council members then. Are there any issues related to the development agreement that are not the issues we've already touched on and, and talked about and plan to clarify? Are, are there any issues with the development agreement beyond the, the items we've already discussed?
Not at this time.
If not at this time, then I think it's, we'll go back to take the same formal action of deferring this to April the second that we just did on the other. That's making sense to my colleague. Okay, so there, there was a motion and a second by Miss Behringer that we, uh, move item two, development agreement, uh, to the April second meeting as well. Uh, that being said, I list for a voice vote of, uh, approval to continue the development agreement discussion to April second. All in favor of passing that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay?
Nay.
Okay, okay. The one, uh, carries that, that will also be deferred to the April second date. Again, thank you for your flexibility. Uh, we'll be talking to you soon and often, and in depth, in depth, thank you. Okay, okay. So we've made our way down to, uh, item number two, which I think is actually item number three, is the planned district conditional rezoning, uh, known as Mahler's Creek PRD. So without further ado, we will ask Mr. Jeff Treisenberg, uh, to give, uh, the staff's presentation and get us up to speed on, uh, where we are on the Mahler's Creek, uh, project.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'll try to be fairly brief with the synopsis of where this project, uh, has been, uh, evolved since last time and leave, uh, most of the time for the applicant to, uh, address the questions that you gave to them at the last meeting and their responses to it. Uh, again, just a reminder, this is, uh, a request again for a planned residential district rezoning. And here again is the site in question. Uh, Bryan Road goes right up through here. We have Everwood subdivision here. And mostly R two, R four, even RA in the area, so definitely residential in character and, uh, fairly low densities. Uh, just to recap, the public hearing for this was back on August seventeenth of twenty twenty-one, uh, after which it went to the planning commission on September thirteenth, the month after. Uh, it came back originally to the town council on December sixth of twenty twenty-one. At that time, it was continued to a data uncertain, uh, largely to see if we could get some movement and agreement around some of the road improvements that needed to happen, particularly at Bryan Road and White Oak Road. Uh, the applicant then came back on September nineteenth of last year. Uh, and there, at that time, of course, we had the, uh, development agreement in place with Pulte. Um, but there was still some, I think, uncertainty as to the timeline at that point. Uh, and then you also directed, uh, the applicant to take a look at some specific, uh, items that were included in the motion. Uh, but again, it is still just single family detached as the only permitted use. Nothing has changed in conditions two and three. In terms of condition four, and again, I'll let the, the, um, applicant respond to some of the calculations and determinations that went into this, um, but they have come back and proposed, uh, what the minimum side setbacks are in the new UDO, um, for six-foot minimum side setback, twelve feet combined on the smallest lots.
Jeff, I have a question. Can you go back to the?
Sure.
Uh, is that the deviation, the twenty percent? Was that a deviation from the standard or?
That's the, yes, the deviation from the, uh, twelve and nine thousand square foot requirement. And so it was at twenty percent before at five feet, um, so it should be under that twenty percent now.
And, and that's the twenty percent, it's this old UDO, old UDO question.
Right.
So because it's twenty percent, they have to get that approved from us? Is that still in the, or their old UDO? So because it's twenty percent, they have to get it approved from us, right?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, again, conditions five through twenty-seven in the staff report. Again, just a summary of some of the conditions there, uh, that we've been over. Uh, again, we did talk about the vinyl soffit question, um, and I believe that the applicant has agreed to, uh, not use the vinyl soffits. So it will be hardy plank at a minimum, uh, and hardy plank, uh, soffits as well. Uh, there are a couple of conditions that have been added since you saw this. Uh, the first one is that an eight-foot tall, uh, solid fence would be installed along Bryan Road in front of the, uh, amenity portion of the property. Um, it would also be softened on both sides with some additional landscaping. And the material would be a composite material, so not wood, not vinyl. Um, this would be a fairly, uh, robust, uh, long-lasting type, uh, that composite trex-like material. Uh, also, um, we did talk about that Coffee Berry court, uh, did not need to connect to, uh, meet still the connectivity requirements of the ordinance. Um, so they have offered and, but they do need to finish it in a permanent acceptable manner to, uh, the fire marshal. Um, so they have reworked that to provide a turnaround at the end of Coffee Berry and would also put some screening landscaping in between. Uh, again, our condition number twenty-seven, I believe this was in here last time, but, um, we did just want to call attention to that again, that this is in the, uh, uh, what did we call it? The corridor impact area for the White Oak Bryan Road improvement. So this project would be contributing to that. And they memorialize that within this condition. Um, again, overall, just over seventy-two acres, not to exceed a hundred and seventy units with those breakdowns. Um, the setbacks that were originally proposed have been modified as we saw in the table in the earlier slide. Uh, here is the revised master plan. You see that T turnaround, um, placed outside of the buffer. So the buffer will come in as far as possible and there will be, uh, additional plantings here. Uh, the main amenity area where that fence would be provided is up in this area there. Uh, turning again, uh, just like the previous project, this project is under the, uh, previous comprehensive plan. Um, rather than being, uh, more dense as the project was before, this one is actually not dense enough, um, by that plan's standards. Um, that, that plan recommended two and a half to five units per acre. This one is coming in at two point four. Again, the transportation plan, in working with TRC and engineering, uh, we have applied all of the, uh, requirements to this plan that has been proposed. Uh, so we do find that, uh, now consistent with our Garner transportation plans and also with the Parks Rec Cultural Resources Master Plan. This was not in a designated search area, um, but the plan did have a greenway corridor along Mahler's Creek. Uh, so this project would be constructing, uh, a good portion of that. We already have a, a portion down at, uh, the Grove at White Oak. Um, so this eventually would, would connect to that and hopefully we'll get a good, uh, greenway path along the creek before long. And when it went to planning commission, the planning commission did agree with, uh, what statement that staff drafted together for them. Um, but they did recommend that, that, that consistency statement came with a, a condition that they did prefer to see those seventy-two hundred square foot lots removed. Again, the applicant can respond, um, to some of the calculations they've done and the changes to the side setbacks that have resulted from that. Uh, so here we are again, uh, to continue the discussion on the reasonableness of the project. Uh, we have provided a little bit of commentary, um, related to how those plan developments work. Um, the applicant has agreed, uh, to that proffering of the slightly larger side setback and they do have a short presentation, uh, to address those questions and directives given to them at the last meeting. Uh, as with the last project, uh, we have both a recommendation for you, uh, to find inconsistent, but yet be reasonable or not reasonable. Uh, and you have items, uh, checked off that you can use to support, uh, your motion in either way or you're also free to add your own. Uh, that is all I have and the applicant, as noted, is here to, uh, focus on the things that you gave them at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Treisenberg. Let me ask the council members if you have questions for Mr. Treisenberg at this point. Uh, Mr. Vance? Thank you. Uh, well, let's hear from the applicant. Are the applicants representative? If you would, introduce yourself, name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Pam Porter with TMTLA Associates. I'm here tonight with Rich Barta of Core Properties and Lyle Overcash with Kim Lee Horn. We are all available for question. Thank you, Jeff, for the overview and for pulling up my presentation. We've seen a lot of this before, so I'm going to try to be brief in my commentary. Um, but our vision statement has always been the same since the beginning. Um, tree-lined streets with sidewalks on both sides of the road to really create a really nice walkable community. This is where our site is located. Jeff already went over this, but we are located on Bryan Road, seventy-two acres. Some project history, I think this is really important to go over because this project has been going on for a really long time. Um, so our initial submittal was in July of twenty twenty. So we've been working on this for four years. You've not seen it for four years, but we have been working on it for four years. And the last time we met, I said our original proposal is for two hundred and seventy lots and that was a mistake. It was actually for two hundred and seventy-five. I went back and looked at our original book that we submitted and we actually had five more than I had noted. And our original proposal was for three, three point eight dwelling units per, dwelling units per acre. And it included both single family and town homes, but we got feedback and we removed the town homes and reduced the density. And now we are committing to a maximum of a hundred and seventy-five lots, all single family detached. We still have the three different lot sizes that we have proposed since the beginning with a density of two point four dwelling units an acre. And that is a thirty-five percent reduction in the density since we started this project. since we started this project. We went to council and came before you in September, and then we came before you again in December, and now here we are again, and hopefully we will get a vote tonight. So at the last meeting, there was several items that we needed to get clarification on to present to you all, so I'm going to go over these. The first big one is we eliminated the connection to Coffey Berry Court. We knew that was a sticking point with the Everwood neighbors, and we thought we needed it for interconnectivity. It was determined we did not need it, so we've removed that connection, and we are only going to connect to Capertree Lane, as Jeff mentioned. The turnaround that we have to build on Coffey Berry will be per town standards for fire standards, for fire safety, all, we're going to meet all those codes. But we are putting that turnaround on the Mahler's Creek side. We're not putting it on the Everwood side. It's going to be on our property on the other side of that 25 foot setback, so we're not, we will have vegetation between Everwood and that turnaround. So Everwood is now, was still buffered from Mahler's Creek with either open space or the 12,000 square foot lots. At the last council meeting, we were asked to evaluate an option that remove the 7,200 square foot lots from our proposal. Making this change would reduce our overall lot count by 14 lots. And having these three lot sizes included in our development provides a variety of home design and style, which will create a diversified development. And our proposal still includes the three different lot sizes, which is both consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and staff's recommendation for approval. And our proposal has always been to prohibit the use of vinyl with the exception of vinyl windows. Vinyl siding, vinyl soffits, and trim are prohibited from this development. That coupled with the use of fire resistant materials such as fiber cement siding like hardy plank allows for a slower spread of fire for homes. And this helps to mitigate the narrower side setback that we're proposing. It's a little larger than before, but it is, six feet is the smallest one we're proposing right now. So the side setbacks for the 7,200 square foot lots, it was formerly five feet, we're now proposing six foot minimum, 12 foot side, so a 12 foot building separation. And the side setback of six feet complies with the new U D O for acceptable side setbacks, which is found in figure 5.6 dash C of the new Garner U D O that you all approved on July 5th of 2022. The property is being marketed for sale to buyers whose interest is to develop the property for residential sales. The developer will enter into an agreement with Pulte pursuant to the Pulte Developer Agreement as amended to contribute its prorata share for road improvements and signalization. In the event Pulte makes a fee and lieu payment, developer will also pay a fee and lieu in accordance with the Pulte Developer Agreement. And last, per request at the last council meeting, additional information is being provided to you tonight about the major amenity that we're showing. We've always just shown symbols. We actually have a conceptual layout to share with you tonight. Excuse me. And as a result of the conversation, we are also committing to an eight foot solid tall fence along the Bryan roadside of the amenity, excuse me, with enhanced landscaping per conversation last time. So this is a detailed master plan. Jeff had it in his presentation, but I went ahead and circled the major change that we made, which is removing that connection and putting that T turnaround on our property to finalize and finish that road. Because right now, it's a stub, and it's too long to be just a stub. We have to terminate it with some sort of turnaround per fire code. So this is what our proposal includes. And we've always committed to quality via our architectural conditions. These have not changed since the beginning. We've always noted that vinyl will be prohibited, slab foundations are prohibited, all the homes will be a minimum of 2,400 square feet. Each house will have a minimum of one of the following, a deck, covered porch, sunroom, or a minimum of 100 square foot patio. At least 50% of the homes will have a minimum of 100 square feet of brick or stone masonry on the front elevation. And again, vinyl is prohibited, less vinyl windows, which is a pretty standard type of window, but all other vinyl will be prohibited. You've seen these pictures before, but these are examples of the type of home style and some of the architectural elements that will be included in the homes in this neighborhood. This amenity graphic has not changed, less the addition of that turnaround that we've revised or planned to show, but I do want to note this development will exceed the 25% open space. So this is a new slide. We've not seen this before, but we have been kind of internally working on a layout for the amenity area. And this encompasses some of the conditions we have. For example, a minimum of a 10,000 square foot dog park, a minimum of 1,000 square foot tot lot, the minimum of a 2,000 square foot pool and 2,000 square foot clubhouse. Note, those are minimums. They can always be bigger than that, but those are our minimums that we're setting for this development. And also the eight foot privacy fence along Bryan Road. And this lot itself is 2.79 acres, but if you remove the building and the pool deck and the parking, we're still at about 70% green space, and that includes the tot lot and the dog park and all the green space around it. And again, this is illustrative, so you know, this is what we're thinking in terms of the layout that makes the most sense. It is subject to change, but all these elements, the dog park, the tot lot, and the pool and clubhouse will be located on this lot. And I'm just going to quickly go over some of the zoning conditions. I won't read all of these, but we're still committing to a minimum of 14% tree save. We are committing to a minimum of a quarter mile of town of Garner public greenway along the west side of the property. A minimum of 1.25 miles of private greenway trail and six foot side path, which will create nice walking loops throughout the neighborhood, is also being committed. And the two new commitments, the first one being the, about the eight foot solid fence along Bryan Road for the amenity, and then the turnaround for Coffey Berry Court. So that concludes my presentation. I hope I didn't go through that too fast. I'm happy to go over anything if you have any questions. And again, Rich and Lyle are here if you have any questions for them as well.
Excellent presentation. Very informative. Thank you. And I'll ask council if we have questions for the applicant here. I'll start down at Mr. Matthews' end.
Nothing right now.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Yes. Ms. Porter, when we first saw it, it was 275, it's 170. Most of those were townhouses that got eliminated, or some, majority of those were townhouses that got eliminated because it's more dense. How many townhouses was them that had been eliminated? And you switched over to single family, but the density is, most of that was townhomes switching over to single family homes.
Right. I don't remember the exact number, but my recollection is that reduction, it was all townhomes, I believe, was around 100 townhomes that we removed from the project.
And y'all are working on an agreement with the White Oak and the Bryan Road intersection? Y'all are part of that agreement?
Correct, yeah.
To participate there? Okay. All right, that's all for now.
Hey, Ms. Behringer? Behringer?
Guys have been in it for a long haul. It's a real example of the long haul, and the changes that you've made are very substantive. I still have my little issues, but I think it's an interesting thing. You moved 100 townhomes from a 270 unit project. Hmm, that's a lot.
It is.
You wonder if somebody had 950, how many they could reduce. But I want to commend y'all on really listening. And I really also appreciate, even though I still don't like 12 foot, it is what we put in the new U D O. I appreciate that. I think when Mr. Vance and I were traveling around the neighborhoods and we saw those five foot, we were like, we need, that is, I mean, so I'm glad to see that. I still don't, still would like 15, but yeah, I think it's come a long way. I think one concern, one question I have is about porch sizes and Pulte. So we drove the Assemblage Project 401 Exchange or whatever, I think that was the one that went here. It might have been, I'm pretty sure that was that one. They had porches, but the porches were just big enough to put post, architectural posts on. They weren't functional porches. And so it looked nice in a render, but you couldn't, you couldn't stand behind that post. So it wasn't a real porch. So and I saw some of the stuff on the screen and porches on the back. I think it'd be good to have sort of a minimum square footage for front porches. And I don't know, maybe those ones we saw had them, and they just configured it in a way that didn't look right or wasn't functional. But that's the only sort of concern I have, again, out of survey and some other work out there. I don't know if Jeff has any thoughts on that, or it's a very in the weeds thing, but I would definitely not, I don't, again, once you see this stuff, you're like, that's amazing. And some stuff you see and you're like, yeah, it's a porch, but I can't put a chair on it.
Right. Until they get to like five feet is doable, six feet is more comfortable for somebody to pass by in the literature that we've reviewed in the past. But yeah, some do like the four feet or less, and it is at that point pretty much just, it's a nice appearance, but you can't actually sit there and do anything.
They'll be amenable to adding sort of a minimum width for where you have a porch. I know all of them won't, because that's just your housing variety, but.
I think we are willing to entertain that, but I'll have to speak to Rich about a specific, like, size.
You might have to talk with planning, because I'm not a designer or planner, so.
But I understand what you're asking for. And yes, I think that creating some sort of minimum for that would be acceptable. We just have to speak about the specifics.
Hi, I'm Rich, Rich Barta, and I appreciate everybody's immense amount of time you spent on this project with us, so thank you all for that and for your comments and thoughtful comments along the way, because I think it is a better project because of it, and certainly staff has worked as hard as I've seen any staff anywhere work on guiding us, you know, down the path, the right path here. So I actually like your comment, Danny. I think, I feel the same way. I don't, I don't, I'm not a fan of fake anything, you know? And calling it a porch and having it so small you can't even put a chair there is not a porch. So keep in mind that when Pam said 2,400 minimum, that's heated and cooled space. So these additional screen porches and front porches are going to be additional space on those houses. But I think we can come up with a number and put it in there and say it has to be meaningful and usable, you know? And we'll get, we'll put a minimum square footage on there. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep. Great, thank you, Mr. Vance.
I have no questions for the applicant.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Ms. Porter, anything you'd like to wrap up with?
Well, I was just coming to get my papers.
You're there.
We appreciate all of the commentary that we've gotten from you all since we've started engaging you on this project. I think it does, has made for a better project, so thank you for that comment about doing, I think sometimes when we come up with these commitments, there's those little details that we're just thinking about the thing and not the size of the thing, so thank you for that. So, but you know, we look forward to your vote, and we thank you for all the help that you've given us to get us to this point. And this is the longest zoning I have ever worked on, so you're right, we've been working on this for a while.
But that's project, though, too, right?
Yeah, well, the ones that take the longest end up, they end up being the best, so I agree. But thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions or comments from council, I'm looking for a motion on this.
I just want to mention one thing, because they eliminated the Coffey Berry connection, it was talked about, and it's in the conditions that there would be traffic calming in the Everwood subdivision that's acceptable to the town engine and other town agencies. So I know some folks are here to help that not being such a straight shot, so there will be some type of calming device on their portion of it and also on the Everwood portion of Capertree Lane. That's right, Capertree, right? Okay. I just want everybody to know that condition is still in here.
Yeah, thank you for that detail. These are all important details. Absolutely. So that being said, is there a motion on this item?
One more question, it's in, on the, I think it's a Jeff or John question. What percentage of the cost for the Bryan Road, White Oak, does this constitute this contribution for that development agreement? If we don't know off the top of your head.
Eleven.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you. All right.
Another good example of developers working to put in infrastructure that benefits them, their projects, and the town and the community. So thank all of you for working together cooperatively to make this happen with the best possible result. Is there a motion on the floor?
I move that the Town Council accept the Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in section six of the staff report and request inconsistent due to the 2018 Garner Forward Plan, yet. I also move that the Town Council adopt ordinance number 2024-5259 approving rezoning of CZPD 2002 as the request is still reasonable and the public interest because it will likely be an overall design that keeps with the town's character and improves the property values, allow and encourage shared use and mixed use developments.
Will we get a second? Include the condition, so we don't have to do an amendment to the motion? Well.
If I may add, the proposed condition would be any front porch or stoop shall be a minimum of five feet in depth, and the applicant will need to sign a written statement consenting to that, so that it can be incorporated into the ordinance.
I accept that amendment.
And I'll suck it.
Okay, motion made, amended, and seconded. I'm going to ask for a voice vote on this, all in favor of approving this request, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Hearing no nays is unanimous, the motion does pass as stated by Mr. Vance. Excellent work, team. Good perseverance, long run, marathon, you might say.
They were first to force in December of 21, and that's when we started really having issues, well, not the issues, the concerns from hearing from people about Bryan Road and White Oak and how bad the concern, issues were.
Even August.
But we're at two years, two plus, they're going to have it done, hopefully, within the next two years, we hope.
This is, this is not, just let me say, this is not a public hearing. We've had some. Anyone who wants to stick around at the end of the meeting and chat with any council members, that's all fine, but this is not a public hearing. I can't speak for the applicant if you want to speak with them as we walk out.
Is that right?
Okay.
I wasn't invited, then.
Okay.
I got a notice, I've got it right here.
Yeah, it's a public meeting. We've had public hearings where the public testified. Well, thank you for your interest.
I'm right on Coffey Berry Court, right next to that turnaround or that route.
If he.
No word from the Everwood people, is that right?
Mr. Treisenberg is available, Planner Director. He may, he may be glad to have some more detailed discussions. Excuse me, excuse me, folks. It's not a public hearing. We've had public hearings. We have staff available to talk directly with anyone who wants to talk about it. Even it looks like the applicant is willing to talk. If you guys would talk in the lobby to your heart's content, and we'll move on with some other business that we have to do here. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding the process that we go through. Thank you. Okay. That being said, we'll get back to the agenda here, start with, you know, start with committee reports. Are there any council members who need to report from the committee that they're? Any committee reports, okay? Now, manager reports, I'm pretty sure we have some Talk of the Town items that are of interest and impact to us. So Ms. Miller?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Before you this evening is your March 2024 Talk of the Town monthly report. We've got some exciting items to provide you updates on. Reminders, first, our spring egg extravaganza event. If you recall, this is a big holiday event around Easter time that we host at Lake Benson this year. The event is scheduled for this Saturday at Lake Benson Park from 10 to noon, so it's a great event. I encourage you to go out there and watch all the kids just have a great time. Ms. Behringer?
I have a question. The weather forecast for Saturday does not look good.
So what will be? Yeah, we'll keep an eye on it, and as we get closer to the end of the week, if we need to make some other decisions about the event, we'll make sure we publicize that as well. So we're going to hope for the best right now, that we've got some clear sunny weather on Saturday. Also, a reminder that our community open house for the enclosed playground project at White Deer Park is scheduled for Monday, March 25th. It is a drop-in style meeting, and the meeting's being. It is a drop-in-style meeting, and the meeting's being held between 4:30 and 6:30 at White Deer Park. So I encourage those who are interested in giving feedback and learning more about that project to attend that meeting. And then finally, I'm excited to share with council, we've been informed that as part of the Consolidated Appropriations Act, the 2024 law that was approved and signed by the president, includes $500,000 for the Garner, for Garner's Meadow Brook Dam and Stream Improvement Project. And this was submitted by Congressman Nickel. And this is very exciting. This helps us out with the Meadow Brook Dam project that we've been undertaking, so I'm excited to see that opportunity. There'll be a formal event this spring where we'll have an opportunity to thank the congressman personally for all his efforts in helping us obtain this earmark, but we're very excited to share that with council this evening. Second page of your report looks at your monthly analytics. Oh. The second page looks at your monthly analytics for the Garner Info app. Over the last three days, 30 days, we had 38 total requests, and you'll see on the chart to the left, the types of requests that have been submitted through the app. Of those that have been submitted, about 74% are either in progress or completed, so we're working on all those requests. And as you can see from the bottom pie graph, our Public Works inspections and Police Departments have been very busy addressing these requests. They respond to about 97% of those things that are submitted. So that gives you a snapshot of our analytics over the last 30 days, and certainly happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Great news, great news all around. Any particular questions for town manager? Okay, excellent report. And now I think we go for attorney reports from Mrs. Jones, and she has some of the most exciting news of the year, I might say.
I do, with a big smile on my face. As you may recall, last fall, council approved the addition of an assistant town attorney, which will essentially double the size and capacity of the legal department. So I am pleased to officially introduce to town council and to the town Ms. Erin Gibbs, who is our new assistant town attorney, who's been here about a week and two days.
Wow, someone newer than me. That's remarkable. Great, we're so glad to have you aboard, Erin. You were worth waiting for.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad to be here.
Thank you, thank you. I will expect twice as much work out of that department right away, right away. Now, that's very, very exciting. Let's see, I guess we move along to council reports. Were there any other reports of any kind from council members?
I think there is a light pole on White Oak Road that has been laying down on the ground for months. It is on the south, okay. If you're headed south on White Oak Road, it's beside the far-right lane, and it's just broken and laying down and has been there for quite a while.
May I look into that soon?
And another one more, and that is there's a significant amount of trash on 70 West between Vandoor Springs Road and Jurgen Road, just scattered all the way between those two roads.
Ms. Behringer, we'll take a look at both of those things and have them addressed.
Thanks for your attention. Other council member suggestions or reports from council members?
Indeed, when the issue with the, we were talking about the park owner station, we talked about fee-in lieu of and land and so forth. I know we reviewed and made changes to the fee-in lieu of, what, about a year and a half ago, two years ago? I think we should review it again, because I think we've learned from the Jones-Hoffes Road Project and the White Oak Roundabout, that property acquisition, the prices continue to rise, and the fee-in lieu of probably is not where it needs to be if it's, you know, wants to match the price of acquiring land, because that's what you're using it for, or developing parks. So I don't know if that's going to be built through the budget process, but I would ask that we do that and sometime, hopefully be able to adopt it around the time of the budget so we can have new fees and/or fee structure to address the increase in property all over town.
Certainly, Mr. Singleton will take a look at that issue and come back to council with some options, try to align it with the budget process.
I know that sometime in the budget rush, some of the fees are automatically doing automatic adjustment, but this is a whole, I mean, this is separate, so...
It's a separate, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. I believe that wraps up the business that's on the agenda. I've been told there may be a need for a closed session here. If council member able to make a motion about moving to a closed session.
I move that we move in a closed session according to Carolina General Statute 143-138.11A6 to consider personnel matter.
Either there's a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
And that was second by Mr. Matthews to a voice vote to move to a closed session per the motion just made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We'll move to a closed session where we'll reconvene in about 10 minutes, another short break in between, and then we will be back here after that to report on the results of the closed session. Thank you very much. Moving right along.
Council met pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, met in closed section to discuss the appointment of a specific employee, the interim town manager. Council had previously appointed Jody Miller as the interim town manager and has agreed to execute an employment agreement with her, and that agreement is in the process of being fully executed.
Thank you very much. So we concluded our business in the closed session. I see no more business before us, nothing on the agenda for the open session, so I would be looking for a motion to adjourn. Ms. Behringer moves. Is there a second to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vance. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, nay. No nays, no nays, no, no, no nays. Unanimous, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much, council members and home audience, if you're still with us. Thank you.